He's doing an MBA. Yeah, is it an EMB?
The MBA.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hi Kathy.
You did, okay.
Oh, hi.
How are you? I'm great.
It's recording.
I feel like we did this just recently.
So, I know that Councilmember Quest is not coming tonight. And Councilmember Martinez is actually stuck in traffic but is on her way. She just called me, she said.
Okay, Cheryl Wink is upstairs, so.
She is, okay. So, we may, to the public, we may be about five minutes late starting here.
Hey, Tom. How are you, man?
Good.
What's that?
He's upstairs.
Okay.
Good evening. Good evening.
Perfect.
Exactly.
That's great. You know what, we, um, so I had my staff do some research on it. One of them was fired in May.
May.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so that's, that's a known thing. Oh, I'm not going to.
He came into me about two weeks ago. That's why I started a year out.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't remember. You mean last night?
Well.
Sometimes I do.
So, there's one fire inspector, there's a assistant fire marshal and the fire marshal.
Was it the date that nature has consistently come back?
Well, I think we have to, right, we have to do something to move it forward though, right? To, we have to change the ordinance. That's waiting on, that's waiting on the state attorney.
Not 9/275, so I will, we talked to Jenny about it. Yeah, so, we covered it today.
I don't see.
I was misreading my line item budget and, and so the numbers weren't matching. And I was, what's going on here? Turned out they still weren't matching, but it was only a typo, so. So, they have these rights, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna point out that there was a typo here. And it's 9/275. Yeah, I feel like they, yeah, all right. Okay. Yeah, they might.
I do the same thing. I'm always up at 5:30. Even on weekends. I just can't sleep.
All right.
Right, right, right.
I will avoid the numbers unless they come up. More details.
Manager can't sentence me.
No, we're just getting started, so.
Welcome everyone to this council special study session on August 28th, 2018. And we are going to take off on our agenda, even though the agenda for tonight is, is one agenda, but we can relax back and report those items that we didn't finish last night.
I know you just barely beat me up.
It is, absolutely.
I don't feel too bad.
No.
I will, so we'll just kick it right off with the very next program that we were going to discuss. That's capital and asset management at the South Platte Water Renewal Partners.
Okay, that's me again. So, this is, uh, this is our capital plan for next year. The significant new projects for the capital plan next year is we have some VFD replacements. We have an Ethernet project which helps us with our, uh, our network within the plant. We have a switchgear which is a significant power, um, piece of infrastructure that's, I believe it's, uh, right around $1.2 million, I think is the estimate. It's an important piece of infrastructure that definitely needs to be replaced because of its age. We have a sluice pump, uh, project and we have some other civil infrastructure repairs. Additionally, we have, uh, construction in pro- uh, progress which is, uh, part of the biogas project and then, uh, Reg 85 projects associated with the, uh, imminent permit changes that are necessitating a significant amount of capital. So, that is what generally makes that up from a large item perspective.
Councilmembers, any questions?
I want.
Okay. So, we'll move on to the sewer and talk a little bit about the capital assets or what we're calling fixed assets.
Okay. The sewer fixed cost program includes fixed costs such as debt service, capital, and the Englewood portion of the South Platte Water Renewal Partners' treatment allocation cost. Debt service, franchise fees and admin fees are approximately 1.8 million. The remainder goes to, uh, operations, maintenance and capital.
All right. Any further questions about that? Council, uh, Mayor Protem Russell?
Are you talking, so the proposed budget is 12.4 million, um, for the fix, fixed costs for the sewer plant? Or the utilities?
Yes.
And those things that you just talked about are what make up that 12.4 million? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Nope. On to the next. Parks maintenance.
The parks maintenance program is basically what it takes to maintain our parks. What it takes to maintain our parks. It's, you know, it's mowing, it's repairing the irrigation, it's taking care of our trees, the, the list goes on. It's 60% of our budget is for employees. As I joked, until we can find robots who can mow the lawn and trim flowers, it probably will remain about that. We have 15 full-time employees and, um, we have about that many during the summer season to supplement our workforce. The, uh, revenues are very small. It has to do with a detention pond arrangement with Englewood Public Schools at Hosanna Field. It's the rentals that they pay us for. The other park shelter, um, is allocated under recreation programs.
Councilmember Wink. One for each.
Uh, thank you. Did I understand you properly, Director Hargrove? You have 15?
Could you move the?
Oh, yes.
Hangover bit. There you go.
You have 15, um, permanent staff members and during the summer you have 15 additional?
Correct.
Support staff to, for the heavier volume season. And, um, is that number of staff, uh, is that sufficient? Do we have data on whether or not that staff is sort of best practice in terms of the number of parks and open spaces we have in our city?
I, I, I think it's not all that we need. The Parks and Rec Master Plan cited, uh, local and national data to point out that there's a, you know, best practices in terms of number of staff per acre of park and we're not up to 100% in terms of best practice. I put us closer to about 80%.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Asset assessments for Public Works.
So, the asset, one of the things that, one of the challenges that, uh, Maria and I have had some discussions on is, for example, when I took over the street department, I had a stack of papers about that thick with a listing of all the streets and what year they had planned on possibly doing work to them. That's just not a good way to, there's nothing we can do with that to fit, you know, to, to project and look forward and no real data to per se unless we at least got it electronically and all that. That's true of a lot of the things. The inventory of the pavement, the signs, uh, the sign markings, traffic signals, even the sidewalk. We have a couple of programs that help us with some of this, but they're all homegrown databases, access databases. What we want to do is get all of this under one umbrella and really get a good inventory of everything that we're responsible for maintaining, which is asphalt, concrete, signs, markings, traffic signs, marking, signals, buildings. And then take that so we can really start working towards getting good future projections as to what we're gonna need for repair and maintenance of, of our infrastructure.
Councilmember Wink. You.
What, what does this umbrella, what is the ideal scenario of this under one umbrella, umbrella look like for you?
One piece of software that?
Do you have anything in mind?
There's a couple that we've looked at in the past. Cartograph is one of them.
Cartograph?
Cartograph. We've looked at that. One of our concrete utilities, one of the problems we have, programs that we have, which is a homegrown access database, and those are just aren't good for sharing information. Yeah. So, uh, traffic signs, same thing. So, cartograph is one. I, one of the things I implemented right away was a program called iWork. It's good, but does it really have this true power? That's, we're gonna, we're gonna look at that. But the fact is, we've never taken the next step just to really start putting it together and we need it all in one place. The multiple databases trying to run all this is just not the way. We can't do the good projections and say, okay, City Council, here's where we're at. This is where we're starting to lose. We need to get some additional funding for this.
I definitely understand that. So, I'm glad you're doing that and I hope that we can have the funding, the appropriate funding for you to have that. It just, you save so much money, you know? It's an investment to purchase software perhaps and?
Yeah.
But my star is to have the truth and the insight into all aspects of where we are and how we're doing and where we might be in five, 10, 20 years.
Right.
Pays in dividends.
And we all understand we've got a very aging infrastructure. So, we really, I mean, really need to get on this.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wink, did you send, you, you've been doing some research in this area. Did you have a link, was there a link to a document that we send out to everybody or did you send me something and I'm not?
Regarding?
Asset management systems or just an approach? Maybe I'm thinking of something.
Maybe I've sent you something about an approach.
Maybe that was it. I just thought maybe it might be helpful.
Uh, share it with.
Background, I remember reading it, maybe it was a month or two ago.
I'll look through my sent email.
I thought we had it sent out to everyone too, but maybe not.
I probably didn't.
Okay, we'll look at it.
Okay.
Might send it, I know you like to read up on these things. You probably seen, you might have seen it already too. Anybody else? Councilmember Sierra?
Yeah, so just a quick question. Is that gonna be an annual cost or are we looking at a buy and maintain model?
I'm sure there's gonna be some cost for licensing, um, 'cause we're just asking for the money to go start doing this. So, um, you know, we gotta look at the, what programs and that's part of what we'll evaluate is what's our, our annual licensing cost. The program currently using iWork is $5,000 a year, which is pretty reasonable for licensing, but, um, that will be in, as part of the equation. You know, we, we understand, everybody who does software understands that, you know, you spend a little bit more, you, you know, you kinda get more, there's more cost benefit analysis or return on investment on that. But one of the things we always have to look at is, is licensing and making sure, making sure also that we fit in with the other IT, you know, that we're not trying to like buy an Oracle system or something like that since we've been through that. Like, no Oracle, so.
Councilmember Martinez? Sorry.
Um, I think this makes a lot of sense. It's gonna really help us project in ways that we really need to. How far back are we gonna go with the information that we have putting it into the software system? Just kind of more recent past or?
More recent past. Most of it, um, they do have some, we have some, it's called a malfunction report. Again, it's in an access database. We'll probably try to bring some of that in if we can get it tied to the right signs and stuff like that. The pavement, when I implemented iWork, at that same time, I also had the company come in and do a complete rating of our system. We paid about $7,500 for that, whereas Littleton paid about $80,000. So, I was in pretty good, pretty good standing. I thought that was a pretty good deal. Is it really taking us to the next level? One of the challenges we found real quick with the pavement management and their assessment is we used, for years, for almost 20 years, we used a product called micro-surfacing. And we quit using that in 2008. So, as that is starting to finally wear off, that's, it's at its life expectancy, it makes sometimes seeing the streets a little weird. So, we wanna get another assessment done. And the assessment just kinda looked at condition. We wanna do a little more in-depth assessment this time. But we only paid $7,500, so we kinda got what we paid for, but it still, it gave us something to start with.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink?
Thank you, Mayor. Backfilling data in a new system is a very painful process more often than not and tedious and would, we've been talking a lot about systems and greater data capture and doing more along those terms to have good vision into our cities. Assets. Is that something that would happen? Who, who would? I, I take it your team isn't, well, I don't know. Who would perform that function? Who would actually sit and support backfilling that data? Is it something you would contract out to the vendor of the software in such an instance?
Generally, yes, that's what, I mean, the, the stuff that I have done in the past, all the permitting and I did the permit, I was involved in the permit system and everything else, we have the vendor fill in the data and provide them whatever information we do have and then let them import it into their system. You know, there's some processes there, but yeah, let them import it into their system. Then they'll train us how to, how to run it from there.
Sure.
Yeah, they're better at it.
Good, thank you.
Takes a big load off.
Oh, yeah.
Anyone else? All right, moving on.
Okay, two more for the South Platte Water Renewal Partners. The first one is pretty simple, uh, I'll take this closer.
And for the public runs, sustainable natural environment now.
And this one's pretty straightforward. It's chemicals for treatment process. And so, it's a significant driver because we use a lot of chemicals in our treatment process to be able to treat the water and the solids to the degree that we do right now. It's pretty unexciting.
Any questions? None.
Okay, the last one is science, innovation and optimization and that is predominantly the lab. And so, the lab is where we take the samples to ensure that we're in compliance with the permits, our permits and the regulations as we discharge water to the river and send solids out to the east. And the vast majority of the cost in that is personnel because we have lab technicians that analyze tens of thousands of samples a year.
Does anyone have questions? I, I do. How many scientists do you actually have on board right now?
I believe the lab right now is staffed at nine. I think that's right.
Kind of a fun little lab to work in.
Mayor Olson.
Yeah, Councilmember Wink?
Is that a consistent number in the last several years? Has there been fluctuation in that number?
In 2018, it went from 8.25 to nine. There was a part-time individual that we brought on as full-time.
Last ten years?
I can't.
Pretty standard?
I, I think so.
As far as you know, I mean, you're in front of you, I know.
Yeah, as far as I know, it's been pretty standard, um, over the past several years. There hasn't been a lot of fluctuation, um, because the, the numbers of samples have been generally the same over the last several years. And I can't tell you how many those are. What's, I'm sorry?
There's some other variables too.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't have asked you that. Thank you.
No other questions? Concerns? Nope. So, we've reached, SN, yeah, three is not on this, right? It's just, we just have it in our record. So, I think we've reached the end of all of them that we put on for tonight, right?
Yeah, yes, Mayor. I, I think at this point in time, there were some follow-up questions from last night that we wanted to provide some data for. And as requested, I do have from HR Director Gonzalez, a breakdown on turnover as well as a census, some census data of all of our employees as well as the vacancies that we currently have. So, I'll just pass these around and you can take, take that data. Thank you. Charlie Comer. And at this point too, I think we wanted to kinda revisit, the discussion last night is kinda centered around the, the, uh, thank you. Whether or not, uh, the council would like to go forward with personnel that's been, have been proposed or some alternatives. And I know that the chief is here, Chief Collins is here this evening to be prepared to speak to, uh, that particular issue as well as maybe not necessarily delving into the policy realm of, of how code enforcement should be operated. But I know Mayor Protem Russell brought up an excellent point that there have been a lot of persons who've come forth to say that we need to do something with code enforcement. And I think, uh, that we're prepared to have that discussion with council tonight so that we can, uh, determine again which direction to go with, with personnel in the department.
And that was it.
Oh, okay.
You were trying to remember something. He remembered it for us.
Okay.
Okay, Mayor Protem Russell.
So, I would like to discuss adding staff to, to the code enforcement. I'm not gonna tell you what to do because you run code enforcement, you know better what to do, but it is, it has been a priority from the citizens for quite a while. And, I mean, part of me would rather spend money on code enforcement than an extra police officer, but that's up to you, you're, it's your specialty.
And I, it makes sense.
Do you have the mic by you?
It's back.
Thank you.
No, it, it does make a lot of sense and, and, you know, in, in any case, when you, if you add a police officer, when you look at, if you try to crunch the numbers, how much of an impact is that gonna have when, when you're going from 78 to 79? It's incremental and, 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 and so I get that part. If you look at adding, let's say, and that's what I would ask you to, to discuss this evening, is if you add an additional line worker, then that would bring their, their numbers to four plus a supervisor rather than three. And my simple math says that should increase things by about 20%. And then, the follow-up question I would have is, is, uh, do we move towards the, the realm of, of being more proactive in, in their investigations or do we specialize? Do we ask some of these, this new person or a current one? What are the, if you wanna call it hotspots for code enforcement, a troubleshooter, if you will? And so, uh, you know, I, I am fine with that discussion and, and, and then the second part would be is Councilmember Wink brought that up about the dispatcher and to me, that just totally transcended into a call taker. And that's not gonna affect what happens, uh, out on the street for the, for the workers. But, you know, there, there's apparently a, a concern about not, folks not getting calls back and, and whatnot. That would also solve a secondary problem that we've had that we have not yet addressed with, we just haven't gotten there yet, but, uh, we haven't had a patrol administrative assistant for a long time. And that would relieve a lot of the duties of the administrative sergeant and the commander. And when you put that in, under one roof, my concern, if you just had a code enforcement, administrative assistant, how much work would he or she have to do? Combine them both, I can guarantee you that we'll have plenty to do. And, and so you get more pop for your buck there. But, and so that's where I'm throwing it out. I do not take, you know, exception to that, to the concept of going there if that's what you folks wanna do. And, uh, and that's why I would like to hear more about, you know, from the rest of you folks.
When I was thinking about this last night, which was not a very, it was a short amount of time, I, I always think, I, I really would like to see us go toward another staff person in this, but only if we could do the administrative support so that it's not, I mean, I think that's a key piece that citizens are bumping up against, that we're, we're somewhat hearing that. The other thing is I would really like us to define what proactive means. I mean, over the years, since we did talk about it several years ago and sort of shifted a bit, um, proactive isn't just putting tickets on people's doors or, it's, it's education. And I think that's where we need to help people understand and that, to me, that's more the middle ground, that's where that pendulum and, that it's about educating people and I think that's where code advisory can be really helpful. How, and maybe KEB and other groups that have this educational kind of approach to some things, that we can do a lot more of telling people what's acceptable, what isn't, you know, what do neighbors get upset about that we, that are part of the code that we haven't really told people or, or reinforced? So, I'd like us to maybe define proactive in some way that isn't just about giving a lot of tickets to people.
And, and my concern would be?
Code violations, I mean.
Is, is, you know, been there, done that, I've seen it, I wasn't part of it, but, uh, to write more tickets truly incenses the masses, so to speak.
Oh, yeah.
But you, you hit it right on the head. If, if you're out there to educate and, and find more of these problem homes, uh, then you, you've gained some momentum in, in, in getting more and more folks into compliance. I, I'm, I'm a firm believer in the educational component and working with folks because not everybody can, can, can bring these homes into repair in the, in the legal amount of time that they're supposed to. And so, in, in my opinion, we should be, uh, working with the community to, to, to get there. As long as that homeowner or resident is willing to work with us, we're willing to work with them. I, I just really hesitate to sit back and, and order more ticket books and start writing tickets because it, it, it just doesn't work. And, uh, we'll have more problems, so.
I'm Mayor Protem Russell.
I think along that lines, I mean, I do think that we need to, there's, there's a process on code enforcement. You just don't go out and put a ticket on the door. You go out and put a notification. And with that notification is what is expected and they have a certain time to comply. So, there is an education piece with that. But I do think that writing some tickets, you're gonna get 90% compliance by just putting the notification on the door. And I'm not sure that we're putting notifications on the door. So, there is an educational piece to that and there's a process for it to take place. And if we follow the process that we have, I believe the process works. And I mean, so another thing that, that we talked about in the flooding also is that, you know, there were trash cans and stuff, so people maybe aren't storing their trash correctly. You're still, when there's flooding, you're still gonna have trash. You, you can't. But I think the alleys are a huge problem too. And instead of paving all of the alleys, if we would enforce the code laws for people to take care, I mean, it does begin with educating the people. It is your responsibility to take care of any vegetation in the alley up to the middle and then expecting them to do that. It would help our trash removal because the trash trucks could then get down the alley. And so, I think that's, I'm not, I'm not saying become heavy-handed, but let's follow the process. And once you start following the process, people are gonna say, oh, I got a notice, I better do it. So, that's, that's where I'm, I think it will, I think code enforcement will help clean up the appearance of this city if we begin to deal with it even-handedly.
I understand and appreciate your comment. I, I truly do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wink?
Thank you. I do concur. I think one, once that notice is put on a home, there might be, I think there are seven days and then after the seven days, if compliance hasn't been reached, there's another set of days.
14.
Before, then you're in trouble. So, it's more than enough time usually to fix. And yeah, which is why I suggested even last night, based on citizen input, that perhaps we, we add volunteers just for that initial. I drive around the city and see weeds taller than six inches, just that alone, all day long. You know, just even to mark on that card, to hang it back, put it on the door, just to support and then, then we can have Dave Lewis and the staff come out if after X days of, I mean, it would take some concerted effort and some communication, but, yeah, I think more of those notifications, uh, which means? which means more manpower, but there are ways around that and creative ways we can look at that without, yeah. And I do feel that education should go far beyond the information, which is very good on that hang tag. Very nicely detailed and in a lovely, positive, friendly, if you really read that, it's very friendly, it makes you feel very good and it's sort of playful and it's not punitive in nature, the writing on that hang tag.
The first notice, the notice you're talking about?
Yeah. So it is very, very, very good. But I do want us to undertake quite a bit more in terms of education in addition to what's there, I would say. I think it's more, we go farther than that.
Councilmember Berentine?
I think what both the Councilmember Russell and Councilmember Wink said is important, there is a consistency that we need to have so that people don't believe that it's targeted. I mean, you don't want to put neighbors so that if your neighbors are tolerant, you can get away with what you want, and if your neighbors aren't tolerant, you can't. That's kind of not the way the law ought to work, so that it's a consistent basis. And I think there's, it's kind of frustrating when we get pushed back like the trash cans that were on Sherman for over a year, where people feel that they have to come down to counsel finally to get something that's obviously illegal and then find out that a code enforcement person has said, well, I gave them an exemption. Well, we have to have a consistent policy that we're providing to them so that they know. Same thing with the snow removal for all of the buildings. We don't have a policy that says you do it three times and then you don't have to do it a fourth. So we have to remain consistent so that the other businesses and other residences don't think somebody's getting preferential treatment. The other is I've participated with what's called the Garden Gang. They've done, I've done some Littleton projects and Inglewood projects where somebody, and our code enforcement people should know, as our police should know, the people in our community that are in need. So somebody's having a problem with code enforcement or coming into compliance and they're dealing with cancer, or they're elderly, or they have some other situation going on, where there may be a group of volunteers that can do that. I mean, so far, the part on the city has been to just provide a dumpster or some way to get rid of the trash and then somebody else is kind of organizing that piece of it. I know that there's, you know, different service organizations that do that, including the one day that be a tool, but there should be some way to identify people in our community so that they don't lose their home, or the city comes in and abates the property and then they have another bill on top of it to try and deal with so that if there's some kind of qualifying issue going on that maybe the community can help. And I think that that's part of what Councilmember Wink was talking about yesterday, so that we could be a little bit more organized with kind of doing, identifying those groups that are willing to do that when we have people in those situations. But the biggest complaint that I hear is that it's not consistent. And that's the policy I think that this council has to come to terms with, is that we're either asking people to follow the law and it's consistent and it is based off of the people who are writing the warnings and that's the code enforcement, not up to whether their neighbors are tolerant or intolerant, or mad at them or not mad at them. It's either the law or it's not and kind of going that way. I think that's caused us the biggest problem so far. So I'd like to hear more to make sure that we are going to address having a policy, a consistent policy that we give them so that we know what they're doing moving forward.
I do a follow-up question with you, Councilmember Berentine. So are you in favor of adding a personnel in this area? That's what I think we're suggesting, Mayor Protem's suggesting.
As I said yesterday, I think I'm still going to stick with that. I think that the personnel is something that should come after we do the policy and have a little bit more information on what we're doing. If we're going to, it was made clear yesterday that we've had the pendulum swing both ways where we've had the citizens think that it's over punitive, but we had the same amount of staff. So they were able to go ahead and write notices and get people with the pitchfork and torches to come down here apparently and tell council to go and be reactive instead of proactive. So I don't think it's the staff first. I think the policy needs to come first and then we need to identify how to right-size that staff.
All right, I'll take that as a note. Member Wink?
Thank you. Are we talking, have we finished the conversation that included this? I don't mean to take away from code enforcement.
I think we should decide here if we want them to bring forward some shifting here of the personnel.
I support another person.
Okay.
Would it be that police officer as Councilman, Mayor Protem offered that it would be that melding of that officer or a different position? Which one are you advocating?
That's what she was suggesting, Mayor Protem was suggesting that we, maybe you should suggest what you said, make sure. I'm putting words in your mouth, but I thought you were saying switching.
Right, well, and basically what I said is I was really leaving it to Chief Collins because he understands what he needs. In a sense, I believe what Councilmember Berentine is saying is correct. If we develop the policy that we want, it would be very easy for you to come up with the staff that you need to accomplish that, right?
And in regards to the policy, you know, I'm a firm believer in, you know, you can set up the rules, but it's the, it's not the letter of the law, it's the spirit of the law. And each time you come to a different home, there's a different, let's say, a personal crisis or a different situation in each case. And so I would offer that, yes, there is the law, but there are some folks that with a little bit of help from us and other services can bring their home into compliance. I just don't want to get into that. This is the law, here's your ticket. And so it does have to be, there has to be some flexibility in how you manage each case because every case is different. And that's the only comment I would make on that.
Well, can I respond to that?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I think, I agree with what you say in principle, but the truth is the letter of the law and that's what your department is responsible, is enforcing the letter of the law. I understand the spirit of the law and I was, I do think it's very important that we provide resources for people that perhaps do have cancer or are elderly and cannot do that. And it fits into this education piece, but that doesn't mean that if there's a code violation, it still needs to be notified. But then also, used to, the Malle Center would have a group of volunteers that would help do different things. I mean, and it's possible we could put out information to get people to volunteer for different things also, to help, to help our neighbors. But I do think that we still need to be consistent in enforcing it, but then, well, if the code officer goes to the door and realizes that they're elderly and then just ask them, could we, or give them a phone number for somebody to call? But it's really, it becomes a conflict of interest when the person that enforces the law becomes the determiner of whether, I mean, because that's how you get into the fact that, oh, people are driving down the street, their yard is a mouse.
And I hope I didn't give you that impression. You know, once you come across the violation, it has to be remedied. It's how do you go about doing it? By either a summons or by other means, but at the end of the day, that has to be remedied. And you brought up, somebody brought up a good point about volunteers, is that, you know, just give me the word and I'll say Tony Arnaldi on that.
Yes, exactly. I was going to ask.
I'll find you a new program for volunteers. She tried to start something a few years ago.
Well, we tried to do the Cities of Service and with-
And it kind of didn't go anywhere, but, you know, neighbor helping neighbor, I'm sure there were programs throughout the country that are out there. And I just probably will put that in her ear tomorrow, or when I see her.
If that happens.
Point of information, could I have, could you ask him the question again? Because I think what the mayor asked, what we were trying to come to was, are we asking for an additional position that would be code? Or would it be the morphing of this position that would be a police officer? And then we went on a rabbit train.
And now we're getting into policy and how we're defining. So I was going to interrupt you and say, let's talk about whether we want to do what you suggested, which was?
Which was?
Leave it up to him to decide how to do it, or his department? Or are you adding a position?
I don't know that I want to tell you to add a position because you know, you're the expert, really.
I'm getting a sense here, if you will, that this is a priority for you folks.
It's a huge priority, yeah.
Bingo. And so with that, you know, what I'm getting is that we need another person out there along with, you know, an understanding of what our purpose is out there and then drive it home. And that's the sense I'm getting.
Yes, I would add to that, since the service piece has come up, I would think that if we're going to ask for more service with some of this, which makes a lot of sense because of the lives that people have, that if Tony Arnaldi is a person that we would put on this, which is, makes lots of sense, that she's going to need some more support.
Oh, yeah.
She's doing a ton. So this administrative piece is key to me in thinking about how that would work well and not totally make it impossible for one person to pull all this together, so.
Well, last year we didn't have a mental health worker and this year we do, so we'll figure it out.
Right, yeah. So I hear two things as well. We need to work on a policy and I don't know how much more policy work you think you would like to have input from us on, but I also am hearing, and Member Wink, you have yours up, so let you speak in a second.
Oh, sorry, it's probably old.
Okay. So, and Member Sierra and Member Martinez, do you want to weigh in? It sounds like we're open to having a position there on how you want to work with it. Member Martinez?
I would prefer not to add a whole new position, but I think, you know, you, I think you're hearing us correctly that it's really important to us and we're hearing from citizens that it's really important to them. And I think we do need to spend a little more time on the policy piece of it and deciding what that balance is. And I think, to the points that have been brought up earlier, we could connect with, you know, the education pieces and maybe keep Inglewood beautiful and code advisory and can assist, I think, you know, if we can pull all these different groups together who care about these things, it might help to offset some of the burden on one person trying to take it all over.
Member Sierra?
Right, and from my point of view, same thing, it is very important. The initial call or the request that comes from the community, I think, is very important. So having that administrative function is important. Also, just defining the policy and just that some violations are a little bit more important than others. So an animal welfare issue should jump to the top of the list. And I just don't think it may be, I'm not sure of the policy and the procedures today, so I'm not sure exactly how efficient we are. So just understanding that aspect of it. And then also, obviously with the flooding and just putting a priority for some of the violations for the code enforcement team, I think, is where we need to spend our time.
I think we need to clarify whether you want somebody answering phone calls or being out in the field. I think it's going to get watered down if you have somebody going, well, okay, half a day in the office and half a day on the street. To me, it's probably not going to work. And, or at least not as much as you would hope it would. So I would offer that you'll get more pop for your buck with another code officer, but you still have that problem of not having somebody answering the phones. I was trying to do my math and the, you know, a first-class police officer, fully loaded with benefits is about 115,000. If you do both, let's say, a field worker and, you know, somebody in the office, now you're pushing about 130,000. So, you know, I also have to throw in that if I hire a probationary police officer, it's 85. So that money, there's a difference. And I just want to be very upfront with you, but I don't know if it's in the cards to do a reception, you know, not a receptionist, but an administrative assistant. But if you had to pick one or the other, I would pick the line worker and try to figure out a way to manage those calls that folks say aren't coming through. That's my opinion.
Yeah. Councilmember Berentine?
We've just been all over the place. I mean, I appreciate, and I think that the chief is trying to go ahead and answer your question, which is what would be best to do. And I think maybe with some of the guidance that we've given, that we could do that. But if we just leave this open, we've gone everywhere from take the police officer and do a code position instead, maybe someone who's answering the phones, or maybe who's somebody who's doing some paperwork plus other stuff. It's just been all over the place. So until we can get a little bit more, I don't think that that's very good leadership or guidance from this council to doing the budget is kind of just whatever you want. So I would like for us to maybe do a policy first and have a little bit more input from the chief on which way he would like to go, whether it's an officer and morph that position, which is what we began this conversation with, or whether it's a police officer and a code person, or if it's a police officer and somebody in the office. We've kind of been all over and I don't think we're given really clear guidance.
I actually think it's an excellent conversation because we're popping out all kinds of ideas. It doesn't bother me at all if it's a little bit circular.
I didn't say it was a bad conversation. Please don't mischaracterize that.
It's not unhelpful. And so I appreciate the option of thinking about it and then allowing the chief to make a decision, maybe with the manager, about how to handle it, knowing it's a high priority. But Director Rinkel has something to say.
Yes, one thing I might throw out as an option is to leave it as a police officer in the budget, understanding the policy needs to be worked out, the details need to be worked out. And then as he has a vacancy, which he most likely will at the time we're ready, then we could repurpose that position.
Chief, how does that work?
Well, I was just thinking the same thing, is that-
Good minds.
You know, you have to put the money on the table and probably the best way to do it is to say it's a police officer and then we figure out how to fund the code enforcement officer. And that makes sense because it's a placeholder. And I am not going to turn around and hire a police officer, just so you know. What I'll do is we'll work on, you know, on figuring out the best way to make this code enforcement position effective. And that's probably the best way to do it.
But at least the money will be budgeted.
Yes, exactly.
That's all I want. I really like that opportunity for you all to sort it through a bit more, but I don't want to lose in this, the administrative help and the call piece, that's so important. So I know you'll come up with some solution to that, but I don't want that to get dropped because I think that's what we're hearing sometimes more than anything else, of just the frustration of getting through to someone and then they might get something done, so.
And for those of you who don't know, the supervisor, you know, and I'm, you know, I'm hearing both sides, and I will just say that one of his practices at the end of each day is for the code officers to respond to any email or phone messages that they have, and barring the weekends because there's only one person that works then. But it still seems to be an issue. I'm not quite sure how I would go about doing the administrative assistant piece since we don't have anybody in the PD to cover that now, or to take that on. So I'm wondering.
Yeah, what, I'll go down the road of Member Wink and how she asks for data so well, but do you keep track of all those calls that come in? Is there an Excel sheet that someone's filling in when, and what the response then is for emails and incoming calls? So that it's documented, so you know, you could say to people, well, we didn't get that phone call.
I don't know the answer to that, but I would, I would say probably that's not tracked.
I would say that would be the place to start then, because then we could start to track on when was it and where was somebody that day? Was someone sick? Was, you know, because maybe it's, maybe it's not as systematic. I don't know. Mayor Protem?
So along those same lines, do the 911 calls come into a different number than the non-emergency calls? And do the dispatchers handle both of those?
There was an email, we have, we do have a response to that.
Okay.
And if you will allow me to find it here, here. I can send this to you, you know, to the city manager's office tomorrow, but I hope you don't be offended by me reading this to you. Inglewood police officers generate or respond to approximately 55,000 calls for service each year. Approximately 25% of those are initiated by the officers. The remainder are in response to phone calls, 911, or otherwise. And in 2017, the communications center handled 109,000 telephone calls. Out of these calls, 22,500 came in on the 911 lines. The 911 calls are differentiated by administrative calls, by- by administrative calls, by a different call screen to include address data, as well as a different ringtone. 911, 911 calls are prioritized and taken before any other telephone calls that are coming in. An additional 63,000 calls came into the center on administrative or non-emergency lines, and the remainder of the calls were outgoing calls, such as calls to Denver Fire, Denver Health, other law enforcement agencies, towing companies, and hospitals. It is very important to note that all administrative phone lines are answered by dispatchers. A majority of these calls generate a call for service or actually emergency calls that simply did not come in on the 911 lines.
So with that being said, if a dispatcher handles those calls that come in, and you're, and we're hiring an extra dispatcher, and they could handle the calls, I do think some of the problem with code enforcement and people calling in or emailing is the lack of personal, talking to somebody personally.
And you know, it raises a question in my mind as to when and what point in time, because they're a different entity, but they're part of the police department. And so maybe code has always had their individual phone line. And because, as Brad Power would know, they've gone from CD to police, back and forth, and, but they finally found a home with us. And I know calls come in to dispatch for code enforcement. But maybe the answer should be, is that maybe eliminate just that part of it. And we can still take emails and things like that, that are probably more descriptive, or from folks that can wait. But the phone calls make sense.
For the sake of time, let's, I think this is really great. These are great questions. And if you have any more, it sounds like you have some sorting through to figure some of this out, which is helpful. You're getting data already today. But we've expressed pretty clearly, I think, that this has been an issue. And if the dispatcher takes care of it from your perspective, I think, then that's helpful.
Could very well.
But just make sure there's enough administrative support for it all. So what I'm hearing is that we do have you saying that, you know, you will work on it within the budget that was allocated. We're not adding another person to it at this point. Member Barrentine?
Back to the dispatcher piece. You're going to send that information to us so that we have all of those numbers. Because I think, I think the biggest concern yesterday was that we had dispatchers, that we weren't prioritizing 911 calls in the way the conversation sounded. And we all know that can't be true. I mean, that's not true, and we don't want to leave the public with that. But to make sure that we know whether the dispatchers are currently answering code enforcement calls, because I don't think the dispatchers ever have a line where they say, just leave a message. So there must be a separate line. So if we could just get all of that information in the part that you send us, so that we can figure out who all is currently doing what, and whether this other dispatcher would resolve that issue or not.
Great.
As well as to make sure, give our community the level of comfort, that at no tone do we not prioritize 911 calls, and that, which is what you just read.
Yeah.
So I appreciate that.
Great summary. You have it all right? Okay. Anything else on this item? All right. We got that one done. Manager Kek? Do you have enough there to, go on?
Yes, thank you for that discussion. So at this point in time, I think, then, if there weren't no other operational budget type of questions or concerns, we would like to then pivot back to capital projects and discuss.
Can I ask one question on this that was sent out that I think Councilmember Wink brought up, on the personnel piece of it? Is this the, just the open positions? And I guess what I was looking for was that somehow, in the conversation yesterday, that we would go ahead and have a list of all of the positions that we were adding as well.
Sure.
And so from what I garnered, we had the, some of them are positions that were open, but I wanted to at least do the new ones. And the tech position, the CIT, the fire inspector, the officer slash code, whatever they end up being. But then there was the deputy, the deputy.
Finance director.
Finance director, that apparently is being added, that was put on there this year as a contingency fee, but then just ends up rolling over as a position for next year. And we need to get a count of all of these, because I ran out of room as I was going down it. But I got one, two, three, four, five, six, or maybe even seven possible positions that we were doing, and I don't know if that's accurate. So if we could go ahead and make sure, including the positions that were added by contingency, that were not budgeted for this year, that are ending up rolling over and being part of this budget for next year as well.
Yeah, thank you for that question. I think what you have before you tonight is a current census, full-time, part-time, seasonals at the top of the page. And then the bottom show the current vacant positions that we have, or that we're currently advertising for. So what we can do is amend this.
Would it be comfortable to say that that position is included in here? Because I didn't get the impression it was.
The deputy finance.
Just as an example.
The deputy finance director. Yeah, it is included in the FTEs.
Point of information, please.
Yes.
Regarding this discussion, does the public, are these two documents on the website now? Does the public have any idea what we're talking about?
They're not on the website, because again.
What's the second one?
We generated these.
These two. One of them is the.
Oh, you only have one?
The retirement rates, and so it might not have been all the way around. This one started over here.
We didn't get it. So it started, anyway.
Neither.
Neither of them, again, because.
Oh, here they come.
We generated this data, again, since last night, so, yeah, apologies.
So they'll be up tonight on the web.
Yeah, we'll make sure that these documents are on the web. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Wink.
Thanks for saying these two.
What we have here, just for the public, is one of them is from Maria Gonzalez, our HR director, and it has the City of Englewood head count from 2012 to 2018. And then the other one is the City of Englewood retirement rates, which we'd asked for last night. I think Mayor Protem, you were asking for some of this or others. But, and then the turnover rate and comparisons to other cities, and giving some ideas of where we sit with it.
And I want to add too, it says 2012 to 2018, but I think it's only 2015 to 2018.
Yes.
You're right, yes.
Good call.
It's a typo there. At the top of the one that's teal. All right, so.
Yep.
So can I ask a question?
And then we're asking for a third document, Manager Kek, that has.
Yep.
The pieces of who are contingent, which are the new ones, and where they'll sit, whether they're already budgeted for or newly added.
What percentage of the seasonals are Parks folks? Do you know? Probably a majority?
Prepondent.
No?
Pirates Cove. A lot of the folks who are instructors at the Maller Center are also considered, but Pirates Cove.
Okay. I just wonder why it's gone down so much. Since 2015, it was 4 or 5, and now it's like not, about 215.
Well, yeah, it's half. Member Wink?
I mean, that's huge.
Thank you. So regarding the document, whose subject is turnover, darker blue, I'm really confused about a lot of what I've seen here. And I don't even know if I should begin to ask, since the author isn't here, but I mean, I.
Say it?
Say it? Okay. So in the top table, the first row under retirement rates, title of the table says number of employees, like, what is that?
Twenty people.
Number of employees who turned over.
I know, I think at the top, it's retirement.
Retirement.
Says.
Yeah, those are, number of people who retired in that particular year.
And the percent of the workforce for Englewood cities.
Exactly.
Percent of total workforce? It says percent of retirees. I think that makes no sense.
Yeah, it should be, we're 10% of the total workforce.
Percent of workforce who's retired is row two.
Percent of Englewood, yeah, personnel.
And then the second bullet, thank you. City of Englewood currently has 31%, 31, 8% employees eligible for retirement. So of that, I'm curious about what the age range of this eligible for, maybe I'm just the person that doesn't know this, but.
Can I just ask a question at this point, just for order of this? Is this going to be critical for us on making the decision on the budget, or is this something that we have to have?
Well, why did we ask for this information?
Because there was a question about whether our rates were really high, and that Englewood was turning people over really fast.
This isn't answering it to me.
Oh, it does, not on the bottom one, I think, the turnover rate.
The whole thing isn't answering it to me.
Okay.
About 900 miles. I'd rather not take up council time talking about it, frankly.
Yeah, I agree.
I have a lot of problems with it.
Mayor, what I might recommend then is that we can certainly have Ms. Gonzalez get in touch with you, Dr. Wink, to discuss this.
Yeah, and I'm happy to pop in here and talk with her as well, to make it easier.
Would you like to do that? And then if there's a certain format that you think might be more helpful?
Yeah, it's just not clear, and the particular pieces of data that are reported aren't answering the key questions that let me find out what I think I'm supposed to find out from this, in my view.
Thank you. So are you fine with us putting this aside?
Please let's go on.
Are we okay?
Yeah, nobody can answer these.
All right. Member Barrentine?
I asked the question yesterday, because we had a 25%. What I saw in the budget page for that department is a 25% turnover. Then it was a 25% turnover with 8% included. That's for 2019. For a total of 28% turnover, 8% of that being retirees, 17% of that being employees, which.
Seventy-seven.
Seventeen percent. To come to a total of 25%, that's a number that was given for 2019. Okay. So I asked for the numbers, because it is a huge cost to the budget to have that kind of turnover. If you're going to turn over 25% of your population, workforce, whether through retirement or through leaving whatever it is that's going on, the training, the institutional knowledge, the.
Very expensive.
It's huge to any organization. So that's why I asked for it, because I think it has a huge impact on our budget. Now, when the, I agree with you that what we have here isn't necessarily really all about 2019, because the way the budget page was put together was how it was going to affect the costs, in my opinion, how it was affecting the cost for 2019. And you are correct, that the number of employees that doesn't come up to, 31% doesn't, you know, come up to that for the total number of employees we have, depending on whether it's full-time or not. That would only be, 31% of people would be 1%. So we need to ask a few more questions, because if we're really experiencing that, and these numbers don't kind of jive with what I looked on, just as a quick search on Google, if these numbers are accurate, this is extremely high, even for government. But there might be some extenuating surincom census that we need to get more into. But it would have a huge impact if we're actually going to experience a 25% turnover. So that's why I asked for this information. And I would agree with you, Councilmember Wink, that's does not answer it. Great, thank you.
All right, so we're going to move this to another time. We'll still come back and explain it to them. I thought it was, you look at the top of that second blue turnover, and it's 23, 26, and 26. It's, we're in the range. But I think it's valid to have or explain it a little bit better, and to give a little bit more breakdown of Englewood, so it's not so.
I just would disagree with those numbers, so I'd want more information.
That's fine. That's what we're going to do.
But it does impact the budget.
On to the next, the next one, then?
Yeah, so, again, if there are no other questions relating to.
Thank you, Senator.
Yeah, you bet. Relating to the operating side, we want to go back to capital. As on the 13th of August, our study session with you, we heard from you that, obviously, the concern was over infrastructure projects, infrastructure-related projects. And we presented to you a base capital project schedule, as well as an alternative. And we came out of the meeting thinking that the council liked the idea of the alternative, but not necessarily the projects contained therein. And so the purpose of the remainder of our time together this evening is to specifically look at alternative projects that you may wish to try to work in. And we are prepared, once I turn the projector back on, to do some live work with Excel, so you can move projects around and see if we can balance that.
Here we go.
I do this all day.
I get to warm up a little more. We can move it here. I was actually getting a little chilly.
Yeah, it's time out until it warms up. No, I turned it off.
It is noisy when it's on, so.
It'll take a minute for the projector to come back up, but.
Got to heat up. I have a, oh, there it is.
It doesn't want to cooperate.
Member Wink, was that up because you left it, or is it another question?
It's up because I left it. Certainly about it.
She's going to keep it up.
Yeah, I like that.
She's been using two tonight, so.
Yeah, maybe need to read. And Mayor, Member Barrentine asked for a quick break to the bathroom soon.
Oh, all right. If she's taking a break, why don't we all take a break? Then we'll utilize our time a bit better. Let's take a little five-minute recess, running bio.
Stretching.
Isn't that what you got that for?
I might need the nap band.
Oh, absolutely, gentlemen.
Are we not live streaming this?
No, I think we are. Yeah, he's live streaming.
Vicky was just saying she couldn't get it. That's why she came.
I don't know. No, we are. Well, I got to find Sam, but no, we should be live streaming.
It is being livestreamed.
Yeah, she's saying it is.
Saying that is, so she can't get it, then she can't get it. I'm just, I watched it all last night.
Are you trying to do it from here, or are you trying to do it from home?
She was still on the watch last night.
Yeah, because you have the system, you know. Yeah, we'll wait till Sam gets back and watch it.
Is there any way that I can get the spreadsheet? Is it available?
It was, it was in the packet. You want the actual spreadsheet?
The actual spreadsheet, yeah.
Oh, yeah. I can send it to you.
It's just easier to sum up the lines.
Mm-hmm. And if you look at the cap, you can see the out years here.
That's the information I was asking for.
That was the information you were asking for the other night. So, I think it's updated. I'm going to get that refreshed, just to be sure.
And I'm guessing that these are, are they password protected? So I can't change any of the passwords.
I don't have it on this one, no.
Do you have read-only?
No, I don't. I don't think I have read-only either, so you can play with it if you need to or want to.
But they are pivot tables?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Sure.
Probably an easy fix.
I wonder if I should have.
Nancy Fenner just told me she's watching from her house, no problem on her computer.
Okay.
What is that, a soda? Okay. Peach tea? Okay. Just straight black coffee for me, that's all.
Straight, oh, come on.
Straight black coffee.
Seriously?
Oh, yeah.
Espresso?
No. Well, I do on occasion, yeah, but just black coffee.
I can't, I can't, what's that, Peru, Chile, and?
Colombia. So it's going to be like a combination.
It's going to be a bike trip, too?
Yeah, some parts of it. Chile and Colombia would be. But I want to, Machu Picchu is like number one on the list. I want to do Machu Picchu and then one or the other. No. No, no. No.
You're a hardcore.
No. Oh, you could just, there we go. But yeah, that's basically, that does fine for me. I did get LASIK last year, so still pretty clear to me. Don't need a refresh just yet. You guys are cold? Oh, no, you're putting on lotion. I just noticed that you were wearing a coat.
I'm dry.
Linda is always cold.
Yeah, I've done that a lot.
I know, I was going to say, I'm warm.
You're warm? I'm not tonight. I was last night.
Oh, yeah, last night was.
It was really last night. It was over warm last night, yeah.
Well, I don't know what is worse, on an iPad or this.
Well, there's only so much Excel data you can see easily.
On a printed sheet that's really small.
At least you can, you know, bring this out, but then you can all on my-
Yeah, on my screen, I think it's worse.
Yes.
Yeah, you need like a laptop for it on iPad.
All right, are we ready? Director Winkle, are you taking us through this?
I will, I will. I believe we had general consensus last time that what we proposed for the main portion of the capital programs, which totals up on line 96 here for the different years, was fine with the council. Correct me if I'm wrong. Where we did have some differences of opinion was the, in the additional programs that we recommended down below for additional money. And I think, believe the council was looking more for infrastructure rather than park-related activities. So if that summarizes it correctly?
I'm not sure if that's correct, at least in regards to the parks. Because I think, I think we did discuss the parks last time and just, if we were going to prioritize a park, we would prioritize Cushing Park over Romans Park.
That's right. We were talking-
According to the master plan.
According to the master plan, right.
We said we didn't want to do it partway. We wanted to do it, if we're going to do it, we want to do it right. And I don't think we have the budgets to do it right right now.
Do the whole project and then-
Right.
Move on to the next. Yeah.
Okay.
So is that what you, did you all hear that?
Yeah.
That's, that's what I heard, but Cushing, you know, go ahead and let you talk to Cushing.
Well, Cushing Park is a $5.5 million project, which we would have to build a fund or allocate monies to that tune in order to accomplish that.
We won't be able to accomplish it within the funding that we have here in the next five years.
So is, is what you're saying with that then is that really isn't going to happen unless we raise extra revenue or find it somewhere else?
True.
So, but that, and that the reason why the Romans Park is up there is that we could do that one?
Exactly.
Okay. And in the master plan, was there a secondary? I know that Romans wasn't up on the top list, so was there-
It was number 11.
Yeah, and, and part of that was, and I, I'm going to stick up for it this way, is that I don't believe you all knew how bad some things were there either. That wall is concerning more than anything else to me, but I think that became more of an attention to like, wow, we didn't know that. And so it's a new piece of information. It didn't happen when we were going through the master plan.
That's true.
Is that true? Okay, because I was on the parks and recommends.
But, but that's-
And I didn't push for Romans Park because it was my district. I was very much a part of the playing team.
But I would emphasize, I mean, there are similar needs at many other parks.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think that the current situation at Romans is a danger to health and safety. It's just a continual drainage problem. So that is a decision point, you know, what, what becomes the most critical to do. The reason that it was on this is because, as someone on our team always says, it's a chewable bite. We can, we can afford it. But it's not the top priority based on the master plan, which was based on need and citizen input.
That's good, that's good clarity. Thank you. Mayor Portman?
So we did decide to do the civic center roof. Did we decide to do that?
This, for the, the roof?
Yeah, the civic center roof.
I believe that's up for discussion. It's part of the extra money.
Well, so this is part of the discussion?
Right.
Okay.
Those are the alternatives. I, I think it's what we all were sort of saying that night.
Right.
And so that's why it's up there. And so now they're putting numbers to what it is and we can-
Right.
Decide, is that what you want us to bring forward or not?
Right. And I actually have had back from the public that the civic center roof is important. We do have to protect this building. It is an asset and-
The concern with the civic center roof is that we haven't seen an RFP. We didn't see the bid. We don't know exactly how much we're trying to allocate to it. That's where the concern came because there was a huge amount of difference.
Can we get an RFP before the budget comes out?
What we had done was a condition assessment. There was a company that we typically use for roofs. They've come out and done assessments for us, such as the recreation center roof that just was replaced a couple of years ago. And that's where that, that's where that number came from. I think what initially was being suggested was, and which wasn't factored in, was removal of the photovoltaic cells on the roof and then bringing those back. And Larry, you probably can, Larry Nemo can probably speak to that better since he's been a little bit closer to this roof discussion, but the concern would be, you know, putting on RFP for, for roof replacement prior to that. But Garland DBS did the, did the condition assessment, correct?
They did the condition. I don't have it with me, but they did do it.
Yeah.
Larry, can you grab the mic?
And the question, Larry, was initially, the concern was, we brought forth a proposal for a million and a half dollars for the roof, and then it morphed into the two-point, increased to 2.1. Can you speak to the delta for that?
No, not, I'd have to have it in front of me.
Okay.
I glanced through it once, Eric, but I can't. I wouldn't want to speak to it.
And then the issue that got brought up, and the reason I brought that up originally was that I had citizens come back and say, that's, that's enormous. And so it's really nice to know that it was just a condition survey and that it wasn't really an RFP process because people looked for the RFP and it didn't exist. So we haven't put out an RFP or done a bid-
No.
-for the roof, so we don't really know because I'm being told by people that they think that's way outrageous of a price. So I don't know because they couldn't find the RFP.
No, it was a condition survey.
All right, so to her question, how long would that be?
An RFP? Yeah, I think an RFP typically would, well, actually, this would need to be a sealed bid. An RFP is more for professional services. So a sealed bid probably is about a three-month, three-month process. Yeah, because you need to have a pre-bid meeting so everybody's on the same page and then release it for a month and then, you know, come back and do a, you know, evaluation of the bids.
We've got, you know, and then the time to develop all the scope. I mean, I'm sure Garland can help us with the scope and stuff, but just to get it ready to go. But yeah, three months is a fairly, fairly consistent. And we'll do a contract for construction.
And that's my concern with that is we're trying to budget now, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Member Sierra and then Member Wink?
I'm just trying to get an understanding of just the dollars that we're talking about today. I know we're talking about 5.4 million in the capital projects, but then there's also, what, a million dollars coming from later lease pay?
So the, the later lease right now has been approved with the expense budget to be supporting general fund. Now, out of general fund, we transfer into the capital fund. The 5.4 million that you see up there on line 96 under 2019 does include that anticipated $1 million transfer. The 2.1 million and anything below that blue line on line 96 would be additional funding that we would need to, to transfer out of reserve.
So that'll be additional funding from reserve, but there's also 500,000 that was appropriated last year, correct, for the roof?
Right. That would carry forward as part of the 2.1.
So it would be 1.6 million then?
Yes. 1.6 this year and then with the 500, it's 2.1.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Wink and then Member Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor.
Right.
I'm not sure I know or have the sufficient background to know why a condition assessment or survey as opposed, why do you do that?
So again, on a large project like this, without actually having to go out to the marketplace, it's not dissimilar to, you know, when you go to, you're doing a, do a construction project, need to be able to count the cost and get in like an engineering estimate. And so we've used Garland before to do assessments. They did the assessment of Rec Center, the service center roof that recently was replaced. Just give us a number of what this is going to cost because every building's different. And ours, of course, has four HVAC units up there, as well as the photovoltaic cells, as well as a parapet wall, which, again, if you're going to do a membrane, and that's what this is, it's a, it's a TP, TP membrane, goes up onto the parapet as well. So they need to do that assessment so that we had a ballpark figure to be able to come and say, council, we need this amount of money to be able to, to do this project.
Want a clarification? I thought that actually got done because of the storm, too.
You are correct. We've had, now we've had two, two years in which we've had hail. And we've had, I believe, a council request was put out and answered by SIRS that basically said, hey, you don't have hail damage, you just have a roof that is metasfunctional life.
But that was part of that assessment piece as well.
Yeah.
So that's, I think that's why that happened, too.
Yeah.
Continue.
Thank you. How much do those cost? I mean, obvi, well, I imagine it might change depending on the building and the, but-
I'm not, I'm not certain what that costs. I'd have to actually ask Mr. Dan Long, who's our facilities manager.
Okay, thank you.
Insurance? Member Martinez?
Thank you. I think it is important to take care of this roof. I think, and we discussed previously, SIRS has said, basically, our roof is damaged and we know it now, and so they wouldn't really cover us for a whole lot if something happened. So I think that's really important to consider, and we've been patching it for years. We're just going to have to keep patching it. The patching is going to get worse. This is an asset we should protect, so I think it's worth spending some funds for that. But in addition to that, I wonder if we should set aside some funds from this capital budget for next year when the short-term and long-term storm drain recommendations come back. I know we don't have any idea how much that's going to cost, but maybe we should set aside some part of those funds to address if there's short-term needs when they come up next year.
Director Winkle?
Can I just ask a question of clarification?
Go ahead, yeah.
So, you know, obviously, as we discussed last night, we have a fund balance in the storm drain of about a million three. That's going to diminish with payments that'll go out this year for fixing the Oxford River Point issue, but we generate about $450,000 annually, right, in that, in that? So certainly, I think we would be, we definitely want to be able to come back to you and say, hey, would you be willing to appropriate funds to address projects that need to be done, including, I'm certain, on the 17th of September, next, this next month, that we'll be bringing forth a contract for that study of the South Central Basin. And then as that comes along, there may, we can come back again and ask for supplemental appropriations. So if you want to appropriate funds now, I suppose you could do so for, for projects, but until we actually know specifically the project and the project costs, it might be a little bit difficult to do, but.
Point of information, or since we're talking about the general fund, can we do that from the general fund for the sewer drainage fund?
No, and, and that's what I was going to suggest, too. So it sounds like, when we talk capital projects, we talk multiple sources. And you're absolutely right, Councilmember Sierra, again, any storm drain project needs to be paid out of the storm drain utility. That's why I was referencing it. You could, as you've seen, we've, we've done the research and presented to you last night, that the general fund could subsidize up to 10% of the revenue generated by the storm drain utility. So you could essentially give $45,000. That's, that's the most you can get from the general fund. So there are constraints for that.
Member Martinez, are you a lot of what?
It's not.
Uh, member Sierra?
Oh, so different questions. Back to the roof. So right here, we're saying that we would be comfortable with the, with appropriating 2.1 million towards the roof. What would the process be if we did get an RFP and it came back at 2.3, 2.4? You would have to come back to council and ask for additional funds. So we're just saying that we would be comfortable up to that amount, but we're not necessarily approving a roof if it goes over that amount.
That's correct. And we would have to go through that process anyway. And that, and that's exactly why we haven't done an RFP to date because you have not appropriated funds for a project. I'm not going to go out to the marketplace for a project unless you've appropriated the funds because then what happens is the contractor's like, you're just using us to go through hoops and you will get a higher bid because I used to be in the contracting business, you get nuisance bids. Well, these guys really haven't budgeted for this, so I'm just going to write on the back of an app and here's a number. So we don't want to deal with that specifically in this particular market. So what we could do is if council would authorize this, obviously subsequent to the, to the end of this year, setting aside some money now, we could do an RF, we could do an RFP for, for a roof and come back with some solid numbers to, to see where contractors are. You, because you can do a roof replacement in the wintertime, just, it's weather-dependent. And we're assuming that this would be replacement, removal of the photovoltaic cells, replacement of the insulation as well as the membrane?
Okay, so I texted Dan-
Okay.
-to help out.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I did talk to him. The 2.1 did include the R and R and the cells, so that's why that number went up. So he just replied to me, basically Garland is, would be like our consulting engineer. So they would put together a bid package, then conduct all the walkthrough, handle all the bid questions, things along that line. And then we, then would go through the process of evaluating the low bidder, which we've done a number of times in the police department. That's a real common tactic we're using with the police department, letting the experts do their job and then when we sit down with them at the end to talk about. Because with this, you always want to make sure you're getting the right contractor. You don't want somebody up there that shouldn't be up there. So he did present the winning bidder. That is the process that has been done. I guess that was a process that was performed on the original Rec Center roof, is what he's saying. And so, and the flat roofs at the Rec Center.
Great. Councilmember Berentine?
And again, we haven't really put out a, we're just dealing with a blind number right now because we haven't put out the RFP and we're kind of basing this off and it keeps going up. And I say that because people that are listening to this get concerned because it just jumps up and we don't really have real information yet to, to be doing that. So I don't want to get married to that number. If one, if we think 2.1 million would cover it, then, but I'm being told that it should be a lot less, so I'm not comfortable until we get there, but I'm at least comfortable with setting a number. As for the storm drains, I feel like we've kind of been left with it. It generates 4.0, 4 and a half thousand, 450,000 a year. I'm sure there are some costs that are already done as maintenance out of that. We would need to know that number because we're not dealing with the straight 450 that we just get to keep and put toward anything we want. Some of that money is already being allocated. And that we only can do 10% additional from the general fund to that makes it sound as if that's all the money that we have to deal with. If that's the case, then we would never be able to do the project up north. So there are obviously other funding availability, other ways to fund this. Otherwise, no municipality would ever be able to have an enterprise fund and then do anything other than with, what's within that 10% or what money it can generate on profit of its own. So we have to come with all the funding sources to kind of figure out how we're going to deal with the issues that we're dealing with because that makes it sound like we don't really have any money. And I think that there can be money if that's what we need, but we're not having all the information yet.
Yeah, and, and towards that end, I, I can appreciate where you're coming from. And what I'm trying to suggest is until we have a project that actually has a number, it's hard to allocate money towards. But again, any monies that are going to go to that project could, you know, from the city side, you know, 10% of the total revenue from the general fund could be allocated. Obviously, the north, the northeast project, the Harvard Golds Dry Golds project, we can't do because we can't build pipes in the ground until Denver does what they do, and that's what's held us off from doing that. But as we discussed even in 2017, for us to do that project, we were going to have to increase rates as, stormwater utility rates, as well as partner with the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, who said they would be able to partner with us up to 50%, but they have to figure out what...
For the one up north?
Yeah, for up north. We could maybe do something similar for this project, and I know that Maria DeAndre has been in touch with Shay Thomas, who you've met before, from Urban Drainage and Flood Control, and I've met with Laura Craig, or from Urban Drainage and Flood Control. They know this is on the radar, it's on the map. They want to see us do a study. They require a study that meets in conformity with their three volumes of Urban Drainage and Flood Control Stormwater Design. Once that's done, then they can start to budget, and we have to work with them, with their schedule, for them to fund, help to fund this project. But there's no guarantee that, you know, we're going to get 50% funding on that project either. They just, they need to be brought into the fold, and we need to work through them and collaborate to do projects. But again, what has been suggested by Mr. Brennan and Ms. DeAndre, I think is an outstanding proposal. So the first piece of it, again, we're bringing the contract to you on the 17th, that's the intent, is to do that South Central Inglewood analysis. That would be not just, hey, what's this going to take, but what interim steps can we take as well, to provide people with a better level of comfort for the system, or increasing the system's capacity? And then, doing the longer-term view with the condition assessment, that that's the $250,000 project, that will hopefully come back and say, "Inglewood, here's what you need to do to build." Then we go design that, full construction drawings, and then figure out what that cost is going to be, and then go back out to get the rates. Maybe you need to bond, as you suggested, what are the options? Bonding future years' worth of revenues, that you know are going to be consistent through the stormwater utility funds, or some sort of general fund allocation that's, again, meets the 10% threshold.
Thanks for answering that. To Councilmember Martinez's point, I would suggest that we start to set aside some of the money now, knowing that we have the study being covered by a potential increase if we decide to do that, and we funded for that piece, understanding that we should have some of that $450,000. Since we're not doing the northern project, we should start putting some of that money aside, with the anticipation that the study's going to come back and tell us to do something. So we should have some money, so that we can do something, I mean, there's nothing to be hurt, and I think that's what you were suggesting, was to at least start putting something aside, so we have that fund, aside from just doing the studies.
Member Berentine, are you giving an amount, suggesting at all, or range?
Well, it's a little difficult to give that amount, because we don't know how much of the 450,000 is already committed.
Right.
So whatever is not committed of that 450,000, I think should be put in there, or whatever money we don't use from any potential increase that we do, given that this increase is listed as an interim increase, and was only supposed to be done for the study, then we can take a look and see where we're at at the end of that. But I would agree with Councilmember Martinez, that we should actively start putting money aside, so that we don't just end up with the study, and then blank faces going, "Too bad, we don't got any money," because then that's just going to frustrate the situation more, to your point, so...
No, and I completely understand what you're saying. So just as a point of clarification, the stormwater utility does sequester those funds, and you're right, we do take monies out of that to fund, as was discussed the other day, some personnel costs, as well as some maintenance costs for equipment that works in the storm drain utility. My question was, were you agreeing with Councilmember Martinez to set aside 10% of that 450 in the general fund, to be allocated towards that? Is that what you're suggesting as well, on top of what's already coming in for rates?
I thought you said that there was 450 coming in from the sewer, correct?
Correct.
Already?
Yes.
To set aside some of that money, after we determine how much of that money is used already? And then, to allocate a portion of the $1.3 million that we do not use as well, to go ahead and make sure that it's committed to that project as well. And we, and in order to do that, we have to know how much of the money's going to be used for the sinkhole and the other things that were already committed in there. But I think some of the money that's already in the reserve should be set aside for that, too. There is no sense in us spending, raising the rates on people, spending money for surveys and studies, and then having no money at the end of it to do anything.
Understandable, but understand that any project that's going to end the, out of this, will be tens of millions of dollars. I mean, again, I don't want to alarm anybody, but just talking to one of the consultants for 10 minutes, and we understood that had there been a short-term solution, it might have been implemented, you know, even in the early 2000s, when you first served on council. But obviously, what we're looking at now is our projects that are going to be in the realm of tens of millions.
Well, the journey of a thousand miles starts with a step. So I agree with Councilmember Martinez, that we need to take the first step.
Great. Member Wink?
Thank you. Can I move, can I talk about whatever I want to talk about on the board?
Well, can we close this one up?
If you're going to, then I'm going to talk first.
Yeah, can any other, member Sierra, do you have something else for?
Yeah, just last question.
I just want to close this one up.
So the 10% that could come from the general fund, is that per year? Yes. Okay, thank you.
So with that in mind, do you want to add some more to it?
I do have, I have a point of information. Are we talking about what we talked about last night, about the options for proposed fee increases, to raise rates now, to build funding, to cover identified work? Is that what we're...
No, we haven't yet, but that is part of it, though.
Is that tied into?
Let's bring it up.
It was tied into what I was saying.
Let's bring it up.
That's what I was asking.
We do need to get some consensus on that, so thank you for bringing it up.
Okay, and then, actually, on the bottom, is, well, it's, on the second slide, it said, "Propose a 2019 stormwater interim fee increase to cover costs above." That is different than raise rates now. This other one was for what happens in the 2019, but...
You are correct, yes.
Okay, okay. So I would agree with raising rates now, and build funding to cover the identified, the work that we, I do think we need to prepare.
So both?
Yes.
Right. Can I, point of clarification, the only work that you're clarifying right now is the study?
Yes, yes. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we, the technician, I'm not...
You're not suggesting technician?
Not, no, I'm not suggesting that right now. I'm suggesting starting to build the funds, so that when we identify a problem, we can start working on the most important areas, the priority areas.
I think, member Martinez, or member Wink?
Member Wink, and then I'll go.
Are you still on this one?
I'm still on this.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Um, no, I may have forgotten what I was going to say. I, oh, I am supportive of raising the rates now, and also setting aside some funds, and I completely understand, it's going to be an enormous project, but if we can at least start saving a little bit, it might help us, you know, take a bite out of the apple. And I don't know how that works internally, like, setting aside money for a project that we don't know about yet. I don't know if there's any processes that might get clouded, or whatever, but I think we should consider setting some aside. And then I have another question.
To what she's saying, could you also add, would what she's saying that we do, would that matter to urban drainage, if we were planning for that and saving any money?
No, I think urban drainage would appreciate that, because they'll know that we have, we are preparing or have skin in the game, so to speak, for a project. So yes, the answer, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other matching partners with something like this?
Yes, there are. And I've just recently had our management analysts look at the ability for us to apply for a flood hazard mitigation grant. This is a flood hazard mitigation, these are flood hazard mitigation projects. So there are a couple of things that could be done. In her analysis, she's found that there is the ability to apply for a grant for up to $100,000 for a study, which, you know, could cover a study. Then there's a second round of funding that could potentially, up to 10 million, cover a project. But before I say that's what we would be seeking, that may be something that we might do in concert, again, with Urban Drainage and Flood Control, who would also be applying for the same pot of funding for projects within this particular basin. So we would need to coordinate with that. But yes, the answer is, there are other pots of funds. So Urban Drainage and Flood Control, everybody here who lives in this metro region pays a portion of their taxes to the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, so they would help us participate there. We could seek that flood hazard mitigation grant funding through, it would be FEMA, those are FEMA funds, that they set aside every year. It's a pretty big number. If I recall correctly, it's 175 million that they apply for the entire country for these types of grants. So yes, there is funding. Mayor, if I might ask, I've heard people wanting to increase the rates to cover, but we don't know to what extent. So we want to raise rates to set aside money, and that's great. But to help Director Winkle and our staff determine what that might look like, understanding that right now, all that we've identified is a $350,000 study, which, again, could be covered, and will be covered, out of our existing stormwater utility fund balance, which currently is roughly around a million three. So do you have thoughts on what you'd want us to increase it to? Are we talking the similar rates, as we discussed last evening? So it would go to $3 a month for residents, because heretofore, I think people pay $16 annually.
What was the 7% for, then?
That was for the study of 3, the 350, plus the technician at 71,000. That was raising the funds.
Right. So it was at 7%, okay.
Well, 7% is, you're, we're confusing two numbers. 7% was for sanitary sewer, sanitary sewer. The, we did not provide a percentage increase for stormwater, we presented a dollar increase. So right now, as it was told, we're...
Was it $2 increase?
$2 a month increase.
According to Mr. Sierra's, Councilmember Sierra's map.
He's correct.
You were, I'm sorry, manager, you were asking member Martinez a question, and I assume everybody else after that, so let's let it follow.
Yeah.
I don't understand.
I'm comfortable with the $3. I don't think that's a lot. According to the rates that we saw comparable, we're by far the lowest, so I don't think $3 a month is out of the question whatsoever. I think it's more realistic, actually, with other communities and what we need. So I'm comfortable with the $3, for sure.
And Mayor, just one more clarify. So I heard also from Mayor Proton Russell, to do that now, which we would then need to bring back a resolution, the council will do a fee resolution to increase the fee, so that we could have that adopted. So is that part of the calculus here, too?
So it would only be that one? The $2 increase to the $3 a month?
And then the commercial?
And commercial to 20?
To $40.
From 20 to 40.
To 20 to 40.
Correct.
Okay, but that's the only one we're talking about?
For stormwater, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Just for stormwater. I'm okay with that, not necessarily to fund the technician at this point.
Gotcha. Just to set the monies aside, yep, I understand, thank you.
Member Wink, do you want to weigh in?
I'm in agreement with this.
Member Sierra?
I'm fine with that as well.
Member Berentine? I have one more question. And then I am, too, but I also, I'm really interested in technician.
I am, too.
Because I think it may save money over time.
Sure.
I'm expecting that it will. Isn't that what the plan is?
It is part of that plan, and as a matter of fact, I don't want to belabor this topic, but one of the tenants of the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District is, I'll just read this quickly, this came out of their volume one, for the Urban Storm Drainage Criteria Manual, there was a quote in here that talked about the necessity for, obviously, maintaining the systems that you have, but there was a statistical figure in here that I'll find pretty quickly, that I thought was very interesting. And they were, the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District would require this if we were moving forward with any projects, too.
The technician?
Yeah.
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 While you're looking, can I let member Martinez?
You bet, please.
Had another comment regarding this?
Yeah, so my question, I know we can supplement the enterprise funds with 10% of the general fund. Does that apply to one fund a year?
No, that's, that's per fund. So you could do 10% from the general fund for stormwater, 10% from the general fund for wastewater, 10% from the general fund for water.
I see. Thank you. So did you find it?
Yeah, basically, it just says, you know, "Stormwater Management Systems Requires Regular Maintenance Failure To Provide Proper Maintenance Reduces Hydraulic Capacity And Pollutant Removal." And of course, we're moving, we are now required, and Larry, you can confirm this, we're an MS4 community, correct? So we have to have, MS4 stands for Multi-Storm Sanitary Sewer Water Systems, and we have to have, actually have them separated. We can't have sanitary and storm together, because of new regulations and requirements. But it also refers to ensuring that we have to treat, we have to condition our stormwater now, too. That's part of the MS4. So in other words, when water is going across, as we saw from this last storm, our streets and roadways, it picks up a lot of debris, and it needs to go through either a bio swale, which means the, some sort of vegetation removes all the phosphorus and nitrogen and nitrates that are in the garbage, or in the things that are washed off streets. Or we have to physically send that water, not dissimilar to what we recently added a new truck wash, vehicle wash at the service center. We have to contain that water, and then take that over to the wastewater treatment plant to be treated, before it's put into the river. So those are types of things...
That's going to be a pretty penny.
It is, it's an expensive process, but because we're in an urban area, because we're a big city now, in the big city area, that's what we're required to do. So any of this stormwater work has to meet those requirements as well, and that's what this is talking about, too.
What that came from is, if you go back to the big eastern cities, they took sewer and stormwater, and took it to the same plants. And that's all being separated now, because of those problems.
And the impact it had on the water systems overall?
Everything we do today, whenever we do for any commercial drainage, or any commercial property, they're required to do water quality and detention. And it's five and 100-year, and then the water quality has to, so that's, we're trying to clean the water before it ever leaves their site.
Member Berentine, and then member Wink?
I'm not comfortable with adding the technician right now, because we're going from what we've told the public, is that we're not documenting it all, we're not inspecting it all, or that we're inspecting once a year, but we're not documenting, or we can't show when it is. So I would like to have some kind of process put into place first. I had asked very specifically yesterday whether or not the state had requirements. I was sent information that I do believe that the state has requirements, and that we have had some process in place, and have been reporting to the state. I would like for us to get all our ducks in a row, before we just go adding personnel, so that we know what we're adding it for, and what we're hoping to accomplish with those dollars. I am not against the technician, but we need to know what the technician is going to accomplish. Second, I appreciate you reading that from urban drainage, but it doesn't specifically require the technician, and I would like for us to go ahead and have a little bit more information on what we're doing. If it's going to look better for us, that we're already in place with the process and procedures, with documentation, with the data, that we can provide, that we've got money being set aside, that we're serious about this, then I want us to do that very purposefully, and what we're trying to accomplish with that. And I just don't think we're there yet with the technician, but I would like to start getting the money piece done. So if we could do a little bit of homework, a little bit of background, then maybe by next year, we can let the citizens know whether we want to keep this increase beyond the study piece of it, and then go ahead and add the technician in there then, because we can show what the need is, what the benefits would be, and what that job would look like, which we cannot right now.
Thank you for your perspective, member Wink? Still on this topic, by the way.
Now that makes you look like you weren't...
I cannot wait for your topic.
That was going to be so boring and awful. You should keep going.
Okay, so, member Martinez, I think, did you have something more to add? You took your seat down? No?
No, I'm actually comfortable adding the technician. I think it's an important step to do, and I think it might help us with the documentation, if at all possible, but that's just my perspective.
That's my perspective, too. Mayor Proton?
It is my perspective not to add the technician at this point. I'm not saying that, that it wouldn't be something that we would add. I agree with Councilmember Berentine, that we will have more documentation by the time we get to this point. So I think that, I think we need to move ahead of the study, and we need to start setting aside money for it right now, so...
We're all in agreement with those two things, for sure. The technician is what's up for grabs still. Member Sierra?
Yeah, I think I'm, it's a tough one, I think. I'd need more information before approving the technician.
What, is anything to add to what Member Berentine suggested with some of the needs of what you would want to know, so that the manager, if that's what you're thinking?
No, same thing, just understand what exactly they would accomplish if we were to move forward with the technician.
I'm in the same boat, yeah.
Okay, all right, so, two out of the three is a yes.
Yeah.
Okay, bring it forward, all right. Member Wink?
Two out of four.
We are waiting, bated breath, what do you have?
This is going to make the whole evening.
Oh, good. We're waiting.
Okay, so, I believe this is a question for Director Hager of.
Let's go back to him.
Possibly. So, our Emerald Ash Borer mitigation, we decided a couple of weeks ago, right, to have zeros there, can you explain the 1% of the CPF, whatever that means, for the art in public places?
That was a resolution passed by council in 1998, that 1% of the total capital projects fund should be saved for that, so you can see the total capital projects fund is 1.5 million, so 15.2 would go to the capital fund for art.
It's going to be sacrilegious.
It's the Cultural Arts Commission.
However, if we have a zero on Emerald Ash Borer and we're in the state we're in, is it possible? So, I'm wondering if we can look at the pros and cons of postponing that for a year, is Cultural Arts Commission going to survive?
I think it would be a resolution of council to change that.
Yeah.
Because it's mandated at this point, but it's certainly within your purview to make that change if you should so decide.
I would, having served on the Parks and Immigration Board and seen expert opinions about ash borer and prevention, I do not believe next year we need to be doing anything. I just.
I'm not arguing with that.
Yeah, I just think that the experts are showing that the kind of things.
Not arguing with that.
Yeah, so, I'd love to see the 1% stay, Mayor Proton?
I actually am very thankful that Councilmember Wink has brought this up, because we have a line of capital improvements that is desperate for this city to improve. If we can live without art in public places, I would be all for removing that and changing it back to zero at this point, and when, and when, it's not that I'm against art in public places, when we are in a stable financial position and we want to put 10% in there for art in public places, I'm okay with that, but I am all on board with exactly what Councilmember Wink has suggested.
Can I just make sure, you're talking about the $15,250, right?
Yeah, not the Emerald Ash Borer.
Right, right.
Okay, others, any comments? Member Martinez?
I'm not a favor of that, I don't think that's a good idea, I think the Cultural Arts Commission does a lot with their $15,000, they really stretch their budget a lot, and that is not a lot of money, but they really make the most of it, and I think they provide a great service to our community, and without the budget, they really can't do anything, and so, I think, and I think it has been since 1999 or something like that, that they have been in, I think that might have even been when they were created, I'm not sure, anyway, I think it should stay there.
Member Berentine's next.
I really think that as we're moving forward, I think we need to put a little bit more pressure, maybe on the Museum of Outdoor Arts, but also on a type of an impact fee that might supplement that, that is a small amount of money for a developer to go ahead and contribute in there, and I think that that might be something that we could discuss as we're going forward with development, rather than having the city provide that, kind of do it as an impact fee type of beautification piece along with any project that's going, and I think that's pretty standard now, I mean, I saw some of the art that went up in Greenwood Village and Cherry Hills, even when they did their new building over there, that's coming from other, well, that was a public building, but from the developers as well, so maybe we could supplement that, maybe we could actually get them a little bit more money, since 15,000's have dropped in the bucket to some of the developers occasionally, and they're already beautifying their own, their own projects as well, too, and I would like to see a fund at some point, some of that money go to making sure that we're doing the maintenance of the art we've already invested in and putting out there, but I think we, to Councilmember Wink's point, I think we could look for some other funding sources for that part of the, you know, $90,000 a year that we give to the Museum of Outdoor Arts, I mean, maybe we should, 90,000 is a lot more than their 15, and they're already creating art, so maybe we could, 96,000, plus the free rent, plus all the other amenities that they get in maintenance and everything that we give them, maybe they could partner a little bit more with us to kind of supplement that very small amount that you might be losing for us to take it out of that fund.
Thank you, I am willing to, this is a small amount of money, and I thought of two different ways it could go, one is we gave up our council members' amount of money for the year, which was 20,000 for aid to other cities, that that could be used in lieu of this for something, whether it's going towards flood victims and fees and that kind of thing, however, I would be fine with dropping this for the year if we do have that conversation for developers, and I don't know what happened when, but when Kent Place did their development, they had to have art, and it was a certain percentage out of that development project, River Run, we did the same thing, we had, you know, the art piece, I don't know where that came from, but somehow.
The River Run came from a combination of Conservation Trust Fund and monies that were saved through the 1% for the art.
Through that 1%, okay, do you remember how much that art piece was?
It was 45,000.
45,000, yeah, and I know that 15,000 is not a whole lot to do anything with, because when we were looking at the art for Kent Place, some of the pieces were.
It's a lot.
You know, way, way, way beyond 15,000, so I would be glad with putting that aside if we do definitely have this conversation, but then we have to look on the horizon, what are the developments that are coming that actually we can enforce this with, we've already lost our synergy opportunity with Swedish, the project there, which would have been a fun one to have something unusual there.
Can I ask a point of information, so that one at River Run, you actually saved, I'm pointing at you like at your money, but they actually saved $45,000 in that fund, and that's what paid for it?
It was about 25,000, and the Conservation Trust Fund supplied the rest of the money.
Matched the rest.
Matched, matched.
And they also helped fund the art piece at Duncan Park, which was, I think, I want to say around 25, 40,000, it was another significant piece.
Another big one.
So, they're not actually doing something like every year, so they do have some, somewhere they save a couple of years and were able to do that?
They saved a little bit of money on, you know, the projects that they do and stuff, but they, when they save up a good chunk of money, they like to help support.
Okay, so I'm fine.
Thank you, thanks for letting me clarify.
Yeah, I'm fine with the negotiation here, if we actually have, so we can put this on the agenda, but I like the idea of moving some responsibility into the development world to do this, especially at this point in time when we're in a boom and they can actually provide it.
One more point of clarification to what you offered, is the $20,000 of the money that council does, did we already?
Appropriate that.
What did we appropriate it for?
Capital projects, I thought.
But nothing, go ahead, manager.
No, that went back into the general fund, fund balance for the budget for 2019, so it really wasn't designated for anything in particular, but it now has been.
But it's no longer our council thing to spend, I just wanted to make sure that.
Good question.
Right, but it's in the general fund, and I do remember Councilmember Sierra saying he doesn't want to lose it in the future, he wants to be able to earmark it.
Yeah.
Well, I think we did for the year.
But for this next year, it isn't, I mean, it is another way to say this comes from, that we're earmarking it for something in particular, and particularly when it's aid to other, this is a whole nother topic, though, but aid to other agencies, to have it go to aid to people within our city that have been impacted by something would be, in my mind, a really smart way to use that, it's a small amount of money, but it could be offsetting fees, which is the other reason, the other thing that we were going to talk about, so. Member Wink?
Desperate times call for desperate measures, so I'm going to keep saying unpopular things, just so we can have intelligent dialogue about something, right? Come up with our thoughts. So, if 80% Director Winkle of the.
We're not clear on that.
Okay. Hence the pregnant pause, okay, so, within the amount of money that goes toward employee staff, right. Has there been any discussion about, I mean, I know we looked at some retirements and turnover, but have we looked at hiring frees or cutbacks? Seems that, you know, evaluate for efficiency, for performance, I don't know what the routine is or the frequency for evaluating employee performance to make sure. It's just a fact, it's facts, you know, is our entire workforce performing to maximum capacity, is there a way to minimize costs there, it's not popular, but I want to talk about it, are you thinking about that? That's a lot of our money.
We do have an annual approval, or annual, what do you call it?
Appraisal.
Appraisal, there we go, thank you, appraisal process, and I think maybe Manager Kekk could speak more to it, because the Director of HR reports in.
And if that money, let's say we did it, and in a perfect scenario, we realize we can save 30 million easily.
Uh, can those funds?
That's our total, that's all of our employees, so, yeah, we can do that, but you won't get any services.
Okay.
Can those funds be diverted to capital improvements, is that legal?
We can transfer from general fund to capital projects. But not the other way?
Right.
Once it's in there, it's in there.
Yep.
Okay.
So, Manager Kekk was going to respond to some of this?
So, just briefly, yeah, we do do an annual performance review, and with Director Gonzalez on board, she's helped us to look at some competencies, we have now six competencies that we are rating our employees upon, it's been a cultural change, though, to actually do that, because heretofore it was a subjective, give me a 1 to 5 on how you think I'm doing, there were, the standards weren't, so now we're putting these competencies in place that are going to be evaluated, and so, we're still building, you know, how to evaluate that, because there's subjectivity in it, there is no performance appraisal that is completely objective, but, yeah, I think we're moving in a direction that is more objective, and so, I appreciate the question, because I think there have been a lot of, we've done a lot of work to actually see what we can do to map out processes that we do and procedures, and see where we have waste, we use the eight-waste process, transportation, you know, all those kinds of things for time, and motion studies as well, but we're a far cry away from, I think, what perhaps some private sector companies would be doing to really put the screws to performance and say, here's what we're trying to do to get another 5% or whatever we're going to get from employees.
Can I ask a favor of everyone, do you need, can we turn the lights back on?
Yeah.
Oh, I kind of liked them off.
I think that, I'm conscious that the public can't see us when they're viewing it, and I just think it's got like a dampening, part of it's my context don't work very well when it's dim, but I think we can all see that regardless at this point, it's only three lines, right, that we're really concerned about, or four? Thank you, all right, Member Wink, were you done?
I think so, I.
So, can I suggest that perhaps what you're asking for is, as we go into the future, you'd like to see an HR plan that looks at personnel?
I'd like to actually see the evaluation, if it's annual, I would like to understand a little bit of detail around.
I do.
How it's administered and what comes out of it.
You want to see the actual form that they use, the tools?
I want to see the tool, yes.
Okay, yeah, I want to say that when I first started on council, I was really shocked.
I bet.
At how little consistency there was for reviews, and even, you know, even the city manager and the city attorney, and there was nothing, and there was a resistance against having any measurement or any kind of categories amongst council and, and Manager Kekk's brought in a really good system, so I think you should take a look at it, it's always easy to improve on, I'm sure, but I've been very impressed with the progress that's been made in eight years.
Good.
That's my take, anyway, but, Councilmember Berentine?
I appreciate what you're bringing up, because I think that it's always important to have a good evaluation system, and that goes more to the retention and how they're dealing with training, identifying people for positions and growth in here, I think we have, from the information that we were given on the census data, a much higher level policy shift, huge shift here, if, I mean, we have increased the number of employees, the total number of employees in the last four years, but we substantially increased from the seasonal, took half of, halved our seasonal and made them part-time, that's a huge policy shift in how we're performing, what type of employees we have and what services that we're performing, that's huge, we went from 32 last year, part-time employees, to 249, cutting down the seasonal, and I really need to have a much better handle on what that looks like for our workforce, that's a huge change.
Yeah, point of clarification, because so many of the seasonals work for my department, I think that is a definitional issue, that we've changed the definition of seasonal versus part-time, so there's more clarification required for those numbers, but I wouldn't want you to think that we double the number of part-time employees.
No, I'm exactly, exactly what you're saying, and that is, that's a policy change, it's a, that's a policy.
No, we, the same people work in the same number of hours, they were just called something different, but not, there was no difference in their salary or their expectations, it was just two different systems and the way they gave them later.
Right, we'd have to, and I'd like a little bit more information on that.
And you're absolutely right, we need to clarify that.
That's very significant for what we're doing, and I need to know what that's like moving forward, not just for this council, but the council coming in the future, how they would, how they would interpret that, what that means to them, because part-time to me means a whole lot, something different than seasonal, so, and the number of employees, you know, it's increased from the 817 to the 890, but that, that for the full-time, part-time headcount, that really does go into a lot of the data and how we're running the city, that's a huge shift in what that means to people when they're looking at that, so we would really need to explore that a little bit more and what that means and how we're looking at that.
All right.
That piece of it, because that's a, that's a lot different workforce than what would be considered somebody seasonal, so I'd like a little bit more definition on that.
Director Winkle has some comment?
Yes, I'd like to go back to the 1% CPF for arts, just to make sure I'm clear on that, so I heard two camps, one is keep the money in there, it's not that much, we can fund build if we don't use it, and the other one is, we can use it for something else, so bring forward a resolution and, so that we don't have to have it in for the 19 budget. My sense was the consensus was to not do it this next year. Okay. Which means that we have to change a resolution on it, what I, I'm not sure what was clear is whether we would earmark that money in some other way.
I wasn't finished, I had another question, follow-up on the, on these, what Councilmember Wink had brought up?
Ah, sorry about that, I.
Oh, okay.
Thought you were finished, it looked like you were finished, so.
No.
Let's, let's hold that one, then, and go for it.
I do think that it's, because we've had that increase along with the definition of what we're doing with this part-time and how we're defining this, I do think that the increase in personnel and whether we can sustain that from the personnel going from 817 to 890 is a significant change in four years, and whether we can sustain that or not, and whether if we have people, either 17 or 25% or 8% or 31 people, whichever number is accurate, that maybe we should put some type of freeze on until we kind of get a little grasp on why we've had the increase, what areas we've, you know, those increases are, you know, necessary in and where we might be able to freeze, might be a good idea, and I think Councilmember Wink brought up a good point, was there any other piece of what you were looking at for a freeze, or how did you see that going, just that we wouldn't replace some of the positions that are coming up, or the retirements that are coming, or how did you kind of look at that?
There are a lot of strategies under that, and so, I don't have something definitive without looking more into it, but, but it seems like an area.
I would like to explore that more, because I do, am concerned, and this has happened before, when we've gone through some better times, that you kind of grow a little, and then it's not really sustainable, and maybe through some efficiencies, or maybe through some freezes, maybe through kind of reassessing that, you only touched on the one point, which was the evaluations, and I'm glad that that's being addressed, because I think that's important, but I only think that's one piece of what you brought up in a string of suggestions that I just would like to explore more.
Thank you, Member Berentine, are you finished?
Are we going to explore them?
I, we have other people have their thing, so I want to ask Member Sierra to weigh in.
So, I guess from my point of view, I'm just trying to understand how we, as a council, can make that determination, we don't have all the information, it's really, to, just very similar to the conversation we were having earlier about the police, the additional police officer, we don't have enough information that we defer to the police chief and what that role for that additional hire would, whether he be on the patrol or he go to code enforcement, I think this is a very similar conversation, I think we, not necessarily defer to the city manager, but he knows how best to, you know, just determination in terms of just the personnel, like, I'm not sure if I'll ever have enough information to say, yeah, we need to cut one person from the building department or two here, that type of thing, I'm just saying, how do we really make that determination with the limited information that we have?
I guess, I think what I said.
Member Berentine, can you let others speak here for a minute? Thank you, Mayor Proton?
In addressing you, we don't, we probably don't have the information, just like we did with the chief, however, we still need to assess the policy and the direction that we want to go, so in asking for the questions and the information, this discussion would be able to take place, it's not that we would be telling staff what to do, but this council would decide the policy that would then give the staff the information they need to make the decision whether to, to cut back, and I do think this is a great discussion, because, you know, the projections are that recession is coming again, and we need to prepare for that, so that's just my response.
Yeah, what I would love to do is what we've been trying to do with the improvement projects, of creating some sort of a matrix of, that you've done on safety and a number of different factors, that would then be utilized as well for when do we rate, when do we increase staffing?
when do we increase staffing in different areas? And they go along the prioritize-based budgeting kind of process, which my hunch is that you've done with these already. So I'm not sure if we can haul that out a bit further in these because I think, well, each of the, each of the one-pagers had that on it. So, and it's, there's a lot of information here. But I also want to say one thing about this one because I think there's a little bit more information behind this. I work in the world of employing people too. And part-time and seasonals is a whole new way of thinking about things. And part of it's state law and the way that you have to actually-
Federal.
And the, I'm sorry, it's actually the federal law. So that's what's going on here. I don't think that, I think the full-time one is the big one to really look at. We have not really fluctuated very much at all. We actually went down last, last year. I think the thing to look at with this is what's the budget connected with some of these and not to worry so much about part-time versus seasonal. I know what that world is like. It's really dicey. It's so regulated. It is so maddening. And, but the nice thing about it is it favors the employee. It really does. It tries to not abuse people in their employment.
If we have people that are here longer than three months, we can't call them seasonal. They're part-time. And I think that-
It's really important to know.
Definitionally, I think that's where we've-
Actually, it's, it's six months.
Okay.
But then they cannot be rehired for another six months.
Exactly. So we start to get hit by definitions of way we've treated employees before, like, well, you're a seasonal. Well, not really because the amount of hours you're working really makes you a, a full-time employee. So I know since Director Gonzalez has come, she's looked, that we had people who were working 32 hours a week who we were trying to call seasonal. And they're really part-time. And so it's just the way in which the, the numbers are flexed. But before we give you, as Councilmember Barantine always says, anecdotal answers, we will have our HR director provide you with a research brief on why you're seeing that fluctuation in those numbers.
If you could also ask her to add into that part-time benefited, part-time non-benefit, because I think that makes a huge difference.
That's part of it, part of it as well. It's part of it as well.
Thank you. That would be helpful.
And they're different levels of benefits, just to confuse you.
Exactly. And that's what, I know, it's very complicated. It is really crazy complicated. All right. Councilmember Barantine, one more thing. Are you on this topic, right?
Yes. The increase of 73 people is what we need to know. Where were they? Where were, where were they needed? And what's going on? If I put the part-time people back to the 32, then we still increase the seasonal by 15. And then I would, I just would want to know where they were and what was going on because then all of the explanation doesn't really kind of jive. And probably because it doesn't jive with each individual department, might be different. But until we have that information, we don't know whether it's right size. Until we have the information on why it went up by 73 people, we don't, we don't know. So there's a reason it went up by 73. Then once we make that determination of whether that's a good fit or right size, then we can help make that decision of whether it should go back, back down or not. And the amount of service that we were providing before and where the satisfaction level is and how we're, how we're handling that, along with any kind of, you know, not only culturals but economic changes that are going on. But 73 people is a lot of people. And to maintain that into the future is a huge commitment, whether they're part-time seasonal or whatever they are. But we need to have that information in order to make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Manager Kek had some response.
No, I was just going to say, yeah, we'll provide all that data. But, you know, the other thing, too, that we want to keep in mind is that anytime there's a vacancy, I do require the departments to submit a personnel requisition form to me, no matter what position it is, whether it's Dugan Comer retires tomorrow and they want another city attorney.
He'll retire?
No, he's not. Just using a little sort of example. Now, now the rumor's going to be he's retiring. Sorry, Dugan.
The rumor will be you gave him a great-
You can have a good party.
Yeah.
But again, I require justification for each position and, and understanding, you're right, that, you know, 73 positions increase over that period of time, on the face of it, seems like a lot. But again, we've been very clear to say that we want to provide all the same services that the community has always had, and that's really been a driver as well. So we have to be cognizant that if, if we're going to be doing some freezing of positions, what's that going to, how's that going to impact service delivery?
So what I'm, I'm hearing that you're going to come back with more on this from our HR director.
Correct.
And then I think what I'm getting sense from everyone, correct me if I'm wrong, that we do want to spend some time talking about policy of staffing going forward and the metrics that we would use for up-down and then also some HR information about performance reviews and how those are being conducted now and how they, those are weighed out for whether you keep positions or not, whether they're being productive or not.
See, even complex issues can be handled well. You did good. Thanks for bringing it up.
Great. So I'm not sure where we are in the budget stuff still.
So-
Lines of text in three hours.
So we're doing a roof or a roof, however, and-
Maybe.
What else do you, so I, yeah. So what else do you need from us on this? You need to know whether we're going to go with the smaller project of a Romans Park or not, probably.
Romans Park? What did you say?
Line 149 up on the spreadsheet.
149. Well, Pirates Cove, we didn't finish.
And I would say both of those are 2020.
2020. So you don't need that from us tonight?
No.
No. No, that, that's-
You just needed the roof.
Illustrious.
Just column H.
Could I ask one question about Pirates Cove, though?
Sure.
How much money do we put aside? Do we siphon off all of the revenue from them or do we put aside any of the money for maintenance from Private Cove so that we have some fund for that?
All of the money in excess of expenses that is generated by Pirates Cove goes straight to the general fund and is not saved for capital.
Okay. And I would suggest that the council come up with policies so that we don't operate that way with an asset that actually makes us money.
Right.
Mayor Protem.
Just at the, the Budget Advisory Committee, Dorothy was sharing with them, we have, how much money, 1.5 million to add to that?
No, the Conservation Trust Fund, we are able to save money in that because it is a capital fund and we have $935,000 saved toward this project. So the 723 that we were suggesting come from, if for capital, would complete the project.
So you have another piggy bank? Is that what you're telling me that you weren't going to tell me about?
Sure.
But that's specifically for-
For Pirates Cove.
Yes.
And with that, I mean, some people on the Budget Advisory Committee suggested that we should go ahead and repair Pirates Cove because it is an income-producing entity for the city.
This next year, 2019?
Yeah, it works.
But we didn't have enough money in that.
Well, we need the 723,000.
In 2020. That's in-
But not, but you, right now, you have the what, how much?
900,000.
So are they-
So we still have to come up with 723,000.
The project is 1.7.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Oh, okay. See, because I was like, she got 900,000. We need 700,000. That'll make sense. I see what you're saying.
Right, we're still talking 2020 on it regardless. Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
That's good to know.
It was still an important point that we de-prioritize everybody making assets like Pirates Cove.
No, I think what I was, what I was asking was that we specifically not siphon off all of their money and specifically put some of that money into a fund rather than just, stop taking all of their money and let them have some, some percentage that we agree on as a council is always going to go for their maintenance so that they can build their own fund up and not depend on the general fund.
And Mayor, just for the clarification to the public, they're hearing some big numbers thrown around. This $900,000 that's set aside is in the Conservation Trust Fund. That Conservation Trust Fund, again, is proprietary fund. Those monies can only be used for recreation, recreation and or park required projects. So we couldn't take that and put it into sanitary sewer, stormwater, general fund. It has to cover those projects there.
It is not being siphoned off.
No, no, I want to make that, no, no, I want to make that clarification that people understood that. Councilmember Barantine raises a point, and that point was if this is an enterprise, Pirates Cove, the water park is an enterprise, why aren't we sequestering the generation of the revenue that's there and keep it in Pirates Cove? And that was also explained during the, the Budget Advisory Committee meeting, why that's not done. And Director Hargrove?
Well, one of the big reasons is because then we could not use any of the Conservation Trust Fund money if Pirates Cove were a enterprise fund. And we use the money that we've accumulated there as savings over 10 or 12 years, but we expend monies out of the Conservation Trust Fund every year for basic maintenance and repair at Pirates Cove, which is allowed.
Would that exclude it if we just had it in a capital improvements project as a designated amount? If we did that, we wouldn't mess with your, your Conservation Trust.
Yeah, you would just need to allocate those savings every year.
Then it's still the same. I just, I won't mess up your money, but thanks for clarifying.
Yeah, no. And I think it was also raised in the Budget Advisory Committee meeting, well, why couldn't we today for 2019 make Pirates Cove an enterprise? We should make it an enterprise. And the answer to that is we're still paying bond debt on Pirates Cove through 2023. So at 2023, once that last payment is made, it may be wise for the city to say, you know what, we should maybe make Pirates Cove an enterprise fund. And then any revenue that's generated above and beyond expenses should be sequestered with them so they could substantiate themselves, raise funding to, to put in new attractions that are going to keep that place, bringing in money.
You know what? I've had this conversation almost every year on council. And ever in the re-explaining, which I think is wonderful. The public needs to hear. So I'm wondering if it's written up somewhere, so that if someone were just kind of checking through stuff, that they would find out that that's what that is. Is it easy to access on our online to, as an explanation? Not that everyone would look for that, but it seems like this is an important piece of information that we need to constantly remind ourselves of. The public needs to know. I don't mind at all talking about it every year because it brings it up again, but it'd be good if we also had it documented somewhere. That'd be great.
That's a good answer request.
Okay. With understanding that it's not necessary, we wouldn't necessarily mess up the Conservation Trust Fund if we did it in a certain way. And the other issue of how much money we have taken and has bolstered our, during bad economic times, we have used that money and probably needed it in the general fund. So that would have to be considered if we ever did it in an enterprise. It's not an automatic either, so. All right, but we can't do it till 2023. Thank you for letting me ask the questions about that.
Good questions.
Manager Kek?
Yes.
Where are we in giving you what you needed at this point?
Let me ask Director Rinkle for the spreadsheet.
Yes.
But right now, I think we do have some of the answers that we were seeking, but-
Right. So I'm, we're on Pirates Cove and I'm hearing that you're comfortable pulling it forward out of 2021 into '20, which is what we've recommended up here. So the 723 would then be an additional ask out of reserve at that point. Again, it's a future year, so we still have a chance to, to change things. The next thing I'd like to do is discuss Romans Park to see if that's something that you want to include as part of an additional revenue or additional funding ask out of reserve or not.
For 2020.
2020 gives us the planning.
You want to re-explain that?
Sign and then the-
I mean, there's, there's always significant costs in construction design and splitting that out into two years. We would do all the construction preparation in '20 and complete the project in 2021.
That's tomorrow week.
If, if there is not a safety, a human safety factor associated, we need that money. And, and we're going to need that money for more than five years. So I say, I'm sorry, but put it off. I'm, I'm saying put off money for things I love and believe in. But we, we just need it, so. Especially since also it's so low on the priority.
Where would you want it to be used, I guess, is the question then?
That's a capital improvement. Because I mean, we have so much capital that needs money.
Do you have a specific area you'd like to start seeing it go toward?
We can talk about that later or maybe the-
You don't have any, you don't have anything in mind right now? That's fine. Member-
I need a point of clarification. I don't know what, what money are you moving and reallocating here?
So although, well, why am I taking these off? Although we're looking at the 2019 line, column H, row 159, 149, there are funds that we're discussing under column I and J for that row. Yes?
2021. 2021. 2020 and 2021.
Yes.
Yeah.
I and J.
You're right. But not this year, but next year.
So what were you moving?
So we're talking about it, I'm saying, since we're talking about it, I don't want those to be in I and J. I want in, in those years, put them in capital fund.
Say no.
We're going to need them in those years. We're talking about today now and next year, but still, we're going to be, we need that money. So I don't even think those funds should exist.
So point of clarification, those would be an additional ask of a reserve transfer. So you're saying leave it in the reserve?
We transfer the reserve to-
Leave it in the reserve. Okay.
No, I say no for the park.
Member Martinez.
I would concur with that and either move it to a different capital project or save that ask for a full redo of Cushing Park since that's our highest on the list. Later down the line.
Member Sierra?
I agree with Councilmember Martinez. I would prefer to put that towards Cushing Park.
Could I ask for clarification in terms of, do you want to dedicate that for, for years or just consider Cushing Park out of reserves at a future date?
Well, so my preference would be if we're going to redo a park, it would be Cushing Park. And obviously, that would mean that we would have to set aside additional dollars in future years. Right now, we're making the determination that we, we're not saying that, the way that I understand the budget is that we're not saying that this is definitely being appropriate in 2020 or in 2021. But we are looking at our five-year roadmap, that these are going to be the projects that we do use these dollars for. So I'm not sure exactly if we go into 2022, 2023, where else we would get that, those dollars. But those dollars, I would like to set aside for Cushing Park.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Member Barantine.
So the reason, if I get that conversation correct, my memory, is the reason that Romans Park was on there was because it was a smaller thing that you could do some stuff with, but the Parks Master Plan calls out that Cushing Park is the bigger need. Or neither at all, and it goes to some other capital improvements project. But we're talking about what's in 2021 and, oh, 2020 and 2021, not actually this, this year. We're not moving anything forward for this year.
Right. And, and I think the second part of that is that we can decide to change that next year again. Something happens and, but it would, it would give us a perspective going into the future.
So neither one is going to happen.
In the near-term.
In the, in this, in this next year, neither Cushing nor Romans will happen. The money is still there and, and the decision is actually up to a future.
Exactly. Exactly. And I like Mr. Sierra's call that it'll be on the roadmap, that we, that Cushing would be our top priority.
And that fits the master plan?
Yes, it does.
At this, at this point, in the report or in the document, we do have Cushing Park called out. We have it called out in the future years for '24 through '38.
Some of you get to make that decision perhaps, then.
Mayor Protem.
So it is possible that Cushing Park could come up next year if we're applying for grant money, and, I mean, if grant money has become available.
Absolutely, certainly.
Okay.
We would want to use, and again, I think we need to explain something as well, and you've seen a more concerted effort to break down projects into multiple years. Again, for us to design a project and try to build in the same year is just not realistic. And so if Mayor Protem is correct, if there is a nice Gilco grant or there's a Rappahoe County open space bonanza where there's extra funding for parks, we'll apply for that and use that for design purposes, not construction. So the construction would still need to have council to take some sort of action in an out year.
And I'm also hearing underlying that some of you would, that the parks might be lower, and there's some other infrastructure things that you want us to keep looking at. So to know that if there is a priority, some of you would like to see those above park, above parks, as long as it's not a safety issue.
Right.
Is that right?
And one other question, is it possible, I mean, we've been looking at playgrounds, is it possible to upgrade, upgrade some of the playgrounds at a not, at a very inexpensive rate that would, you know, I mean, I do think it's important. Because people are moving into the city with small children.
Yep.
And I do think the parks are important, but I think that we don't necessarily have to spend millions of dollars.
No, but a replacement of playground equipment, somewhere around $300,000 to $400,000, even not doing any extensive landscaping or preparation. So they're not, we don't have that kind of money.
Okay. But is grant money available for that type of thing?
That's how we've done, we will do, Jason, we did Vitolo, we did Baker, those sorts of things.
We get to do a second reading on one of them Monday night.
We will continue, we will continue with that.
I think Member Sierra was next, and then.
It's a follow-up to that.
Oh.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. And what about is the lifespan of park playground equipment?
I hope it's Romans Park, it's over 20 years.
I honestly don't know. I could guess, but.
Okay, that's a good guess.
Twenty years.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Sierra?
No, I just think it's very important that we start setting aside dollars for the parks, because when we, when I talk to constituents, they always wonder where our dollars are going to. And our dollars are always going into things that they don't see. It goes towards IT, towards networking, you know, they're going to see the streetscapes on Broadway, that type of thing. But a lot of it is not really making it back into the community, and so, at least what they can visually see. So I think it's really important that we start prioritizing the parks, and for the same reasons that Mayor Protem said, there's a lot of kids moving into the neighborhood. Cushing is basically a gateway to Inglewood from Santa Fe. So I think it would be very important that we start looking at that area, and I feel pretty strongly about it.
One of the things, one of the things we've tried to do with this capital budget is to get away from just the fund building, where you're putting aside a bunch of money, and the residents don't see anything happening. They're just saving the money, and you're not putting it to work. So what we've tried to do is identify the actual need for the money in this, and that was why, if we don't use it here, I would recommend we just keep it back in reserve until we are ready to use it. And then we've got the bulk there to use.
Exactly.
I have another question about parks and having to do with budgeting like this, and I don't remember in the master plan. And I know with Cushing Park, it's going to take a number of years and some particular design things, because everything's going to be shifted around. It's a pretty, I mean, it's a pretty extensive project with land shifting. With a park like Romans or some of the others, we won't probably do that kind of major shifting of everything, right?
Correct.
So could there be, and maybe you've done this already, an identification of all the playground systems in the park system that are just simply what Mayor Protem is suggesting it's, it won't move, we won't be moving that somewhere? What's the lifespan of each one of them, and what would be the cost? Because that would be a quick win that we know we're going to have to do at some point. Some of them are way older than others, and there's lots of new, you know, kidscapes out there and stuff. Could, has there been something like that already?
Insofar as it meshes with the master plan, like, that's the reason we went for a playground equipment grant for Jason Parks, because Jason was one of the top parks identified in the master plan. And we knew we couldn't afford to do that and Cushing, so let's fix the playground there. And that's sort of where, where we've been going on that one, now that we have the master plan. You know, we don't have any plans for Denny Miller, there's no playground equipment there now, so. But we can go down through the master plan and say, you know, what can we do in this park if we can't afford to do the whole thing?
Can I ask a point of clarification on the money? Is everything that somebody pays, like the soccer or, you know, fees in there, does it go to that park, or does it go back into a fund?
It goes into the Recreation General Fund revenue.
Okay.
I think Member Sierra's point of doing some, and Mayor Protem probably, this is some really important work that is smaller, that maybe we have to wait on the bigger infrastructure stuff, but at least it brings up quality of life in neighborhoods for families and for attraction, and we've got these great schools. We want to keep people in the city, families stable, neighborhoods. That's where I think these could be helpful. I am so thankful that we got the Jason Park grant. That's a huge, huge win to be able to get more of those degrees.
No, I think we'll, we'll continue with that strategy.
You're always really, Parks farming is phenomenal, getting grants like that, because there's available grants too, but it's wonderful. All right, we spent a lot of time on that. We have, do you have clarity then on this?
I do on Romans Park. We'll put that back in reserve.
Okay.
With that, I'd like to consider the Civic Center building envelope, and since we are putting the Romans Park money back into reserve, would you consider bringing that forward into 2021? Even though we've considered bringing it into 2023?
What, can I ask you a question about, I have to go back and look at those pages, but what impact will it have on the sale of the property or the actual future of the property in terms of its quality and its worth? Will it make a difference in what we need to do next?
Yeah, Mayor, that's a good question. I think, again, one of the important things that, regardless of anything else that's going on, we're assuming that we're staying in this building, and we're staying in here for the duration. And as such, one of the things that you want to do is ensure that you have a sound roof and a sound building envelope. And so, building envelope, for anybody who doesn't recall what this is, is where you have the exterior of the building, the seals. Again, if you were to look out that door, for example, you can see daylight from the outside through that door, because the door sweep has met its functional life. Window mullions have failed. We have glass block in this building where the mortar has fallen out of the glass block, and insects are coming into the building. Rodents are getting into the building on the main floor because of, again, door sweeps as well as disparate materials coming together, where concrete meets ephes, which is like, it's like a stucco material. That's, those have failed, and so improving the building envelope improves the life of your building. It improves the energy efficiency of your building. And so, it's a big number, because this is a big building. It's 138,000 square foot of total square footage, but the exterior of the building, if it's not maintained properly, does start over time to have impacts on your, the efficiency and life of your building.
So you started it with saying an assumption that we're going to stay in the building, and maybe, maybe that's the assumption we work from in making this decision.
It is. I mean, because we haven't had a discussion.
Right.
From a policy perspective of what, where are we going? And you've heard me say before, we're paying a lot of money to be in this building. It's $2.4 million a year. And it's a lot of space for 100, roughly 120 employees that are in this, in this space every day. So, but the assumption is, we need to assume that we're staying and we're keeping, we're keeping this, because we don't have an alternative right now.
If we do the easements, yeah. Okay. I'm not sure which was first. Mayor Protem?
But Councilmember Wink never exaggerates.
Member Wink. And you better have something really fun and juicy.
All right, great. I'll just ask the question of this topic. Well, I wanted to say, when Member Sierra talked about Cushing Park being an entry point to Inglewood and the importance of that welcoming piece, one, is Depot Park actually a park? You made me laugh so hard, I'm sorry, I'm crying. Is Depot Park really, is it a park? Because speaking of the entry and right across the street, that's not very, I live right there.
Yes, it's a park.
It's parkland owned by.
We made it a law.
It's by vote.
Years ago.
By vote. The people voted it's a park.
That's what I thought. So that, okay, so we have nothing to do with what that looks like and.
Well, the park piece, yes. The building.
No.
So no. Okay, thank you.
It's a fight for debate.
And then we were just talking about, remind me again, what was this last thing we were talking about?
Building envelope.
This building.
Yeah, the building envelope.
Right. So do we have information, maybe I should submit a council request, on best practice in terms of functionality and efficiency of cities, maybe municipalities of our size, when administration, council is with, near the police? When it's, you know, there's some cities have the lovely, the big building, and everybody's inside, but when they're nearer together, there's got to be some statistics about better functionality, better success, I don't know, lower problems, fewer problems. I'd be curious about that, if we're going to talk about staying here, police establishing themselves, there's no plan for Denny Miller Field, space, I don't want to take away space, but I'm just thinking, just thinking out loud.
You're talking a campus?
Yeah, more of a campus.
Something like Cherry Hills, where the city building and the places right there.
Many cities, but they, I'm just wondering what the benefits might be to the community since we're talking about it.
We can do a research on that. I'm not sure there's any scholarly research on that or not, but however, from a managerial perspective, it makes sense, there's some efficiencies to be gained when everybody's in the same complex or the same vicinity, for sure. We'll do the best we can for you.
I can look it up, too. I mean, and we had some security staff downstairs for a few hours. Now we've increased that, that's a.
Yeah, when you add the library.
Black team up here.
You're talking more building design rather than a campus, I mean.
The whole thing.
Yeah.
There are pieces of it that might intersect to make it a better.
If you have a mall, you're more open.
Exactly.
Versus an office building. No, I don't want to, I'm making light of it, but yeah. People keep telling me that my office was in the ladies lingerie department, and I'm like, great. But no, there's a difference, and you're right, in how that would be managed.
I'm not sure which was next. Member Martinez?
Okay. To the building envelope question, I don't know if we can pinpoint this exactly, but wonder how much the energy costs are for this building? I don't know if we can narrow that down to this particular building. I'm sure they're a lot, and I wonder if the building envelope work would help to save us money in that area. So that might be another possible way to look and see how that $1.3 million might be saved over time if we do that.
Great point. Mayor Protem and then Member Berantine.
And along with the building envelope. I do think it's something that the museum of art would be willing to help us with that, because the free rent. I think, you know, we have maintenance in this building, and that's something that perhaps we should consider. For help.
Finished? Yeah. Member Berantine?
And it's 2023 that we've paid this off?
That's correct.
Then we're going to have $2.4 million more available to us every year.
Wow.
So I would, right now, we pay, hold on, right now, we pay rent. And once we have the building paid off, now, I would rather that, if we're going to go ahead and stay here, go ahead and put some of the money into this building, so that we could go ahead and, but, well, now I can't say anything, because now he's already, if you're going to, it doesn't make sense that if we can pay the $2.4 million now, that that money then isn't freed up, just like my house, that if I'm paying a mortgage and all of a sudden I'm not paying a mortgage, that I can use that money for something else, whether we use that and anticipate that we're going to have some struggling issues going on, whether we can save some of that money, whether we put some of the money into maintenance, and then we have some additional, but that we just don't, you know, kind of grow and just have it go through our hands like sand, that we plan for it, know what we're doing with it. But if we're going to go ahead and stay in the house, then we need to go ahead and make sure that we're, we're paying so that it's a worthwhile place to stay in.
Point of information.
Also, also, that once that we're out from underneath that, the EPH and this, and we've paid this building off, and we're out from under those contractual agreements, that we've paid the debt off that we incurred, whether the requirements of what we can do with this building would change as well.
It would.
And we would be able to go ahead and have the requirements that are on this building now, because of all of the art push and everything of what the conceptual idea was at the time that never came to fruition or worked out, that burdens us today with this, may not be burdening us then, and we could rent out certain areas of this building or have other availability for different functions for this building. To your campus piece.
Member Wink had a point of information. Just let her ask it, because it might be something back further.
I am thinking, your points are obviously very valid. However, when you think about the way we maximize this, or the, how much, the degree to which we maximize the space here, two, what the space was originally designed for, and the number of emptiness, the amount of emptiness. And three, the amount, I mean, the projected amount of gains we could make from this building, if we were to sell, maybe it's bringing the city, maybe it's employed by retail spaces or commercial spaces that are bringing in significant gains for the city. There are many, many ways in which we could run some calculations and project the potential net gain from this building being used for other purposes than Manager Keck and other individuals that are in.
It's not a point of information.
It is.
You're going to ask a question?
Oh, it isn't?
No.
It's a debate, but I love debates.
Point of information is when you have a quick.
I love debates.
When you have a question that needs to be quickly answered, okay? I know we misuse it a lot with this council, but it's, I, you know, it sounds like you want to enter into a conversation with her, which I think she's glad to have, but it's not a point of information. Point of information is a quick question. So let, Mayor Protem will demonstrate one for us.
Point of information, what, what really happens to that $2.4 million when, when the, when it's paid off?
Yeah.
Do we still have it, or does the bond go away?
Thank you.
I can explain that quickly.
May I, Director Keck, do that?
Councilmember Berantine is on the right track, her thinking is correct. It's not going to be $2.4, because $1.5 is debt service, 900 is O and M. So 900 includes, 600 of it's about energy and utilities and O and M, and then 300 such of that 900 remainder is CAM, or Common Area Maintenance Charge. We are part of a 53-acre site. When this building is paid off, we're still part of a 53-acre site, where we have to pay Common Area Maintenance. So that Common Area Maintenance includes landscaping, snow removal, fountain improvements, fountain maintenance, those types of things. So those don't go away, but you will have $1.5 million that you could then put back into the building for improving the elevators that all need to be replaced because they're of the same age genre, other types of improvements here. Or you could say, you know what, we're just going to make everybody use the stairs, and we're going to take that $1.5 million that we now aren't paying in debt service and put it towards capital projects, or whatever you want.
We're getting to debate again.
Right. So now he's answering her question, I think that's helpful, we now know a little bit more clarification.
All right, thank you.
So I have, I have, it's quarter to nine. It's quarter to nine.
She does this every time.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
It's, it is quarter to nine. Do you want to continue on this conversation with this item? Or might we put this off, because we're not talking about 2019, and have what I think is a question of assumption? Are we going to stay here, which is what you then said, an easement, you're staying here? Or whether or not we even agree with that? And we have a little study on this building.
I was talking about 2019, and I would like to finish if I.
That's what I was just going to say. I would like for her to finish, and then I'm okay with it.
And then this question. All right, Councilmember Berantine, you have the floor quite a bit, it's not like I don't give it to you, so go ahead.
So since we're going to be paying this off rather shortly, the need to go ahead and make sure that we have this building efficient, and that we lower the cost and that we make it safer, and get rid of the bugs, it's really a lot easier if I have a stream of thought without all of the interruptions constantly. So hold on a second. Now, to your other point, the, you're correct. I mean, I get what you're saying, that not all the $2.4 million is that piece of it, and that we have the, the O and M, we have the CAM charges. The problem is, is that the thing we need to consider is that once those, this building is paid off, EPH goes away. So we have, we are, we are the collectors then of the CAM. We are the ones who are running the 54 acres, and we're collecting that money, and we're part of what, what EPH would have been, and we still haven't really gotten a good handle on how much, you know, EPH pays, or what, how they're managing that money piece for the CAM piece as well. But we would be doing that, and we would be collecting that from our other leases, but we would be doing that, and we would be collecting that from our other leases, because we would end up with all of the property owning that. Now, this also depends on what we're going to do, given the foreclosure, not foreclosure, Wine Garden, but we could repurpose this building to Councilmember Wink's idea, that there are a lot of areas that we could do other things with, we can't do them now, because we're under the auspice of the contract for what it was originally. So, and I'm, I don't think that we're really going to be able to move out of here for the period of time until we pay this off anyway. So what could happen between now and 2023? What ideas, what innovation, what ideas, what opportunities could come to us in partnering in what we're doing, but we really have to wait that period of time. So, back to 2019, is that I really do agree that we should try to put some of this money into this building to, for both the roof, although I think we're way over the top on how much that roof should cost, so I do think it's probably going, should be lower, but that we start looking at some of these other improvements. And it would have been way shorter if you guys hadn't started a debate on that.
Thank you. Can I ask Director Winkle and both of you a question? So are you suggesting that this would go into 2019?
No.
No, I didn't think so. So we aren't really talking...
I suggested, since we took the Romans Park out, to move it forward out of 2023 to 2021.
Yes.
If you're comfortable.
I thought we were going to start looking at some of those charges sooner than that.
Which charges?
Well, the...
Building envelope, elevators.
Right, the safety and energy things, I thought we were going to start doing that sooner.
That wasn't what was proposed, but could I ask, could I ask maybe a clarifying future request then for you all, would actually to come with some plans of what could be done? I mean, there is no option to not use an elevator, we have to be 88 compliant, I know you're teasing, so if that is that pivotal at this point and critical, then it needs to be fixed. People have to have access to you all if you're going to stay here. So could we have, are there any things that we should be doing in 2019 in this building that maybe we haven't considered as a stepwise plan?
Yeah, we have to talk to facilities.
Maintenance, yeah.
We're out of, we're out of the league of what we have tonight for that.
And there's nothing immediate, but we just know that the life of this building, given that these are original equipment from 1985?
Something like that.
1985 this building was built, man, I was 15 then.
Oh, my goodness.
You know, what do we need to be planning on replacing? So we'll get back to you on that.
I know.
So I still propose, then, that we have a discussion, because we keep kicking this one down the road, and as long as I've been on this council and past ones, we keep talking about this building, and it's, 2023 is going to creep up fast, I think we should start to develop a strategy for it. What do we think best use for it? We may have to spend some money to do some study and thinking about it with some experts that look at where it is. It is, I mean, ULI folks had a heyday looking at the Broadway corridor and then thinking about the cross-sections of it, and we haven't looked at that. I would really like us to spend some time on it and have, I hope, a really great debate. Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. I would be in favor of moving the building envelope budget forward either '20 or '21, and then, like you said, if there's anything in pressing in 2019, we need to talk about that. And then also, I think we should have a full-blown study session on this topic, like was mentioned, but I think maybe it might be wise to wait until after the foreclosure...
Wine Garden.
Yeah, Wine Garden stuff is settled, so that we have a better idea of what's going on there. So I think we should, once, and I'm under the impression that's going to happen, hopefully, pretty quickly.
It is.
So maybe whenever we know that that is finalized, maybe schedule a study session after that, so we get a better idea.
Have something scheduled.
Point of information, do you know what the timeframe is right now?
Yeah, it's in, it's in the works right now. C3 assets is going to acquire the portfolio formerly known as the Wine Garden-Inglewood project. And so, Perumba, our Chief Redevelopment Officer, is going to be coming to talk to the City Council, hang on while this document comes up, I believe it's in September.
Wow, okay, that's quick.
It's coming up, September 24th, that coincides with about that time. We'll know more information about what C3 is going to be doing with the proposed, with the properties that they're going to be picking up from Wine Garden, and then how the city can or could interface with that.
I think it makes sense to wait till that piece of the puzzle is done, before we spend too much time diving into what are...
It's coming.
Well, we want to give them enough time to actually think it through of what they'd want to bring to us and what they know, so I think that's very wise, maybe a November study session, but let's not lose track of it. Member Wink.
Thank you. This is an aside, but it's very much tied to everything we've been saying. Is there a way to move forward whenever we need to perform studies by experts, that we can do that without, by minimizing the cost to do that? So you talked about ULI, I mean, are there other entities that will support the city, maybe work in kind for a government entity? I know we need the support, but I'm paying, every time we pay for a study.
Well, ULI was free, right?
Yeah, the two projects we had with ULI were free, wherein we can, we will, I mean, but if we're going to be engaging architects and things like that, there's going to be a cost.
It's just the way you do it.
It is. Yeah, you're in the development business.
You didn't think you'd be in real estate development?
No, I had no idea.
Mayor Portem.
I would just like to weigh in on the question that Director Winkle asked. Yes, I would like to move the building envelope forward to 2021 or...
I would agree with that, too. Me, too.
Yep.
Yep.
I'm still with the parks.
You what?
I'm still with the parks.
You're still with the parks as a priority over this?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, you've got two more years.
At least it's moved more forward.
No, exactly, yeah.
And then you can move it next year to the park.
Right, exactly, we're going to have this conversation next year, so.
All right.
It's closer.
Then that was all of them, right?
That's it.
I think we had one thing from last night, besides, do you want to close any of this up on this? Did you get what you needed last night in operating budget?
Yes, thank you.
Because we finished some tonight.
Yeah, you did finish tonight. I think we have the information we need from an operating side, as also, as well as capital. We will put that together and put it into the budget book. I just want to say, thanks to the council for your diligent efforts all throughout this year, to help us to get to this point with the budget. And so, I know it's been a lot of extra effort and time, I appreciate you meeting two nights in a row to finalize this, and we're, I think we have what we need.
Great. There was one more thing last night that we talked about that was a bit confusing, is whether we're going to talk again tonight about it, and it's about fees, whether or not we would waive fees, but we don't have enough information to really make that determination to do.
Correct, I did have a...
If you remember, Mr. Questa brought that up, and we bannered it around a bit.
I did have a conversation with Mr. Power today from Community Development, they are doing some research and pulling information on the very topics that you raised last night, the number of egress windows, and roofs, and wind damage, and things of that nature, and having that discussion, he just wasn't able to pull all that together in one day, and obviously you can't act on it in any way, because this is a study session. So what we would like to do is to continue to pull that together, bring it forward as soon as practicable, for you to look at, and then you can determine at that point in time if you still want to move forward with waiving the fees for that wind damage that transpired. You know, the actual, in actuality, what we discussed, too, we reached out to some insurance folks, and they've said, hey, wind would have been covered by insurance, and so, we get that people still want to get permits, but in theory, that should be covered by their insurance, and so, that should be put into the decision-making matrix as well from council.
Yeah, I think that's really needed, is to figure out what, there's a lot of insurance-covered things that maybe some people don't know, or maybe their deductible is so high, that that's part of it, too, in a $60 permit or a $200, to me...
I thought it was egress windows that you were, you brought up.
There were two different things. Remember, Questa brought up fees for the wind and hail damage that was not given in the grants that we were doing. So I just think having that information is what we need about insurance. The second one was egress windows and doing an educational push, and I think Member Berentine was picking up on what I wanted, too, is I just, I would not want to do that without making clear throughout the city, we're trying to incentivize a safety opportunity for everybody, and give several months for them to do it. I know it's really expensive to put in egress windows, so it's not something people probably run to really quickly, but if a small permit makes a difference, let it, let it happen. So if we can get both of those things, a little bit more information within the next two weeks, that would be wonderful. Is that okay with everybody? All right. All right, so we do have council members' choice, and would you like to start out?
I'd like to start off. I'm just very thankful for the staff and the hard work that you put in on the budget, and just how all the council has worked together in discussing this, and so, kudos to you. And then I have a question, is the city of Inglewood hosting some sort of, I don't know, forum or something for other cities, where other cities are coming here in the near future? Somebody just called me today and asked about an agenda, was an agenda going to be sent out? So I'm assuming it's going to be something in the near future.
The only forum I can think of is, we just got a note from Littleton for a Tri-Cities meeting again, that's coming up.
Actually, that was just the extra one set up for the mayor's...
Right, but I'm not aware of another forum that I can...
It wouldn't have been this?
I'll try to get, I don't think it's, I'll try to get more information.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Number Wink.
Number Portem. Number Martinez. I just want to thank Manager Keck and all the staff for all of the hard work preparing this budget for the entire year, and thanks for being patient with us as we worked through it for two full nights in a row, plus a couple other months. Just thank you, everybody.
Members Sierra.
Same, just want to thank everybody, and putting it with all the questions that I had regarding the budget, so.
You're good.
Really, really appreciate it.
Anytime.
Member Berentine.
I want to echo that, I really do appreciate it, but I'll thank you when it's done, because you ain't done yet, so we haven't completed anything, because we haven't voted on it yet, so we still have a public hearing, and I certainly don't want to give the public any impression that this is the end of this process, it's not, because we still have the book to come out, they'll review it, and so that they can have input, and there still could be some other changes as a result of the public hearing, so, as, I guess that's kind of required of them. So, but I do appreciate the work that everybody's done so far, and the work that you have yet to do.
Great, I would echo that, and I also wanted to ask Manager Keck, at this point, if any of us thinks of something else that is puzzling us still, or we hadn't noticed before, are you entertaining us, sending an email that you'd send out to the rest of us, so we all know what those questions were?
Yeah, certainly, we're always open for that. Anytime anybody has a question or concern about anything that's shown up thus far, or something that you feel that was forgotten from one night to the next, or even after you get your budget book on the 7th, by all means, please feel free to reach out to us, and we can disseminate that to all the council members, as well as any answers or backup material that you may feel that you need, or citizens requested, as part of that. And Councilmember Berentine's right, the next step would be, you know, budget book on the 7th, public hearing on the 17th, and should there come any changes from that, we'll need to do that prior to making sure that we're ready for ordinances to approve a budget, any of the budgets in October.
Can I ask for a point of clarification?
Yes, ma'am.
Since the whole process, it's kind of important that we do it in public, so that everybody understands how we're making the decisions, and what information we're taking in to make the decision. If anybody brings anything, is there a way, like additional questions, or some issue, is there a way to put that forward, so that it's part of the public hearing, or part of some kind of public information piece of it? Because I'd hate to have somebody get, ask a question, get an answer to it in the meantime, between this process, without some public way, or maybe you could ask the acting city attorney, I don't know how that would be done.
No, I'm happy to answer that. We can, so what we'll do is, we'll, on our front page of our website, when we say, here's the budget book, if any questions emanate from that, we can absolutely attach that to that, to that area.
So if there's a question and the answer on something, like somebody goes, oops, no, we don't really have 200 more part-time employees, here's the answer to that, then you can put something in there, so it's really available to the whole public, along with the budget.
Right.
All right, that's fine.
Yeah, we can attach it to the budget.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah.
On that note, my second item is similarly related, is the use of council requests. I think we need to make that a much stronger use by all of us, when you have a question of the manager that someone, that anyone else here would be interested in knowing the answer to, if we can just put those into the council request, sometimes I think emails come across my desk from some of you cc-ing me, and I keep asking that if we put into council requests, so that it is public to you all, we all get the same data, same time, same answers. And then, I think we talked last night about tracking sort of conversations at the meeting, and maybe, I don't know, maybe, I don't know, Councilmember Sierra, if you, you sort of have had some ideas about how to, how to better do our council requests sheets, so that it was easier to track, but maybe this could be rolled into that, I don't know if you're willing to think about that in your Excel mind.
Well, no, I was just, just seeing if we could leverage some other tools that we currently are using, maybe TrackIt, and some of the things that the police department are using, not sure if that's one way, I know that a spreadsheet is possible, if we just want to go a quick and simple way, of just figuring out what the headers are, and then entering in information that way, it's not the best way to do it, but it's a way. I don't know, those were just initial thoughts.
So I... Can you check of it?
We, yes, and we do still.
You do.
And we do still, and we have the number now, so you can see what it is, I don't know if you've...
Well, I think my, I made a comment about how our council requests come in in PDF format, and that I would prefer that in an Excel spreadsheet, because it's easier to, easier to manage that type of data, right? So I think, I think we discussed that aspect of it, and then it kind of went into the, into the discussion about the, yeah, the public forum, or the public portion of the council meetings, so.
And some of the things that are brought up during a regular meeting, scheduled in our schedule, we put right into there as we go, so that they become a public document of what's the response then to it, if it's something that needs to be moved to more inventory.
Who's the action, who's taking the action on it?
But isn't that an administration thing, wouldn't that just be something that the city manager would do, that doesn't need council?
I'm just bringing it up, because we aren't doing it that way right now, all the time, so I'm responding to the regular meetings, so, mine, all the time, so.
I wasn't trying, I didn't know whether we were trying to manage what you were doing, and I wouldn't go to do that, I would just make any suggestions, then.
I think it's suggestions for improvement, which we're certainly open to, to make it more functional.
Oh, no, I appreciate that.
That's all I'm suggesting, and primarily for the public, because that was, the question